...for July 24, 2018. I'd like everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting will open with time for public comments. Is there anyone that would like to address the board?
Thank you, Joyce Flynn. I just am proud to announce that our Energy Committee summer scholar this year is Caleb Scribner. He would be here tonight, except his mother thought that this was a big crowd for someone who is a rising eighth grader. And also, he just started his program, which is construction prep, and he has homework tonight. What they're doing with his week-long construction STEM program this week is building a ramp for a children's hospital. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Joyce. Steve?
Steve Kritzman from Yarmouth Port. First off, congratulations to the Board of Selectmen for providing that opportunity for the frank exchange of ideas last week at the YD High School. I thought it was a great event. I would just like to say I hopefully we can get this host agreement thing going. It seems to me there should be no dispute that the first choice for Vineyard Wind to come in through Yarmouth, aside from the monetary benefit, it's just the best way to do it. The concern over Lewis Bay is absolutely justified, but both these things are not, by any stretch, mutually exclusive. Hopefully, we can come up with reasons and meaning to satisfy the people who are concerned about Lewis Bay and Vineyard Wind so that they can bring this into the lowest cost on their side. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Yes?
Susan Starkey. On that same note, Mr. Chairman, I have a letter signed by 85 Yarmouth residents just put together in the last two days in support, because not everyone could come last week to the Vineyard Wind meeting. But we're really urging you all to continue with the host community agreement. So we've got that letter and all the signatures and precinct numbers.
Okay.
And we'll email it to you as well. And then I just wanted to know, how is the memo of understanding coming? I remember last week that Vineyard Wind said they'd be happy to put that in writing to make sure that there's money for legal and consulting fees. I wonder if that's already completed?
No, it's not. It will be a subject of some discussion this evening.
Okay. And then is the decision about whether or not to go for a host community agreement already made?
No.
And when is that planned to happen?
We don't have a specific plan. We're still listening to community input, and we have a lot of discussion within the board and with Vineyard Wind, so.
Great. Yep, I really encourage you to meet very soon with Vineyard Wind. If I understand, it could, the decision could come from the siting board as early as July 31st, or maybe as late as August 31st. So we don't have much time.
Okay.
But thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Brian Kobel, Swordfish Drive in South Yarmouth. At the last drive-in site meeting about a week ago, it came up that Mr. David Helberg, who has addressed the organization many different times, has moved from South Yarmouth, and there will soon be one, if not two, seats on the committee, open for discussion and appointments and all. And at this point, I'd just like to ask at the board and the committee, who I don't see represented here tonight just yet, to give serious consideration about having one of the residents and folks with some proximity to the project appointed to one of the seats. And we think Mr. Larry Fenley has expressed him for several times, and he told me that I can certainly reemphasize his candidacy tonight, and we would ask for consideration on that.
Do you happen to know if he's submitted papers to the town on that?
He had on the first go-around. I don't know if they need to be refreshed, because he had interviewed with Mark on that.
We have plenty of paperwork.
We have the paperwork. Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Vita?
I'm just curious, did any of you on this board understand the Matikes, the new building process, and especially as it related to the funding? Because obviously, somebody ran circles around Yarmouth and Yarmouth taxpayers, and it apparently seems to be pretty much a done deal. And the Yarmouth taxpayers are going to be in for tens of millions of dollars again, unless I misunderstood, you know, because of what the vote that was taken at the school committee last Monday. The...
Excuse me. We will be discussing that at 6:30. That's the plan this evening.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I just wanted to know, because I was very surprised that it seems that the school board has all to say, the school committee has all to say, and the representatives of the taxpayers have almost next to nothing. Now, I spoke with Dan this afternoon, who, I asked him about the regional, about deregionalization. And he told me that about the regional district, which is undergoing sort of a deregionalization, and there's a lawsuit involved there and what have you, but it is a possibility. Even when, you know, the partner or partners vote no, apparently you can go to the legislature, and this is apparently what happened there. I would rather that he explain it to you, because I don't want to get anything wrong, but it is a possibility, and we're not going to get any help from Wayland at all on that matter, I can assure you, unless we can possibly go to Will Crocker or somebody like that in case this ever comes up. And then, I understand that it would be possible to put a second ballot on the election, in the election for the funding, a separate ballot that would get, it would be a non-binding question to get a sense of the town about deregionalization, for example. So that's, I mean, it's not a sure thing. Again, it needs to be, you know, discussed with, I guess, town council or somebody, but that's a possibility, I guess. I mean, I find it absolutely appalling as to what happened last Monday, and to find out this late into the process, that we never, we never had a chance, by the way. It might be past the period where that can be done. From the very beginning, we were told that the auditorium is a non-reimbursable part of the building. And at first, Carol said, "Well, the, it was needed for the children and their orchestras and what have you." And then, the second time, I think, I think it was the second time, that she wanted to provide meeting space for town meetings, that we don't need that. As you saw last Tuesday, the high school plus the senior center, I understand, can accommodate 300 people.
Okay.
So there are other possibilities, and since it's non-reimbursable, and it's a major part of the cost, I don't know whether it's too late...
Thank you, Vita. We're going to move on now, and I'm sure our board will consider. We have that on the agenda this evening. We will consider all options, so, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Tom?
Good evening. Tom Barron. I've left the package at each of your positions, is a copy of the presentation I made to the planning board last week. I understand there's some difficulty with getting the transmission of that through the public TV, so that's why I prepared the copies of the presentation. Hopefully, it would be a start of a conversation on the topic that I presented on. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Is there anyone else? Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. Tom Nickenow from the Village of Bass River in the wonderful town of Yarmouth. I come before you this evening for a comment about our old drive-in site. This board has put in charge some great people to do some terrific work, and they have spent many months in hashing out what could be done, finally, after 35 years. I'm here this evening to, just to try to move a little bit further, forward with maybe the name. We have posters out advertising our festivals at the old Yarmouth Drive-In Site. Well, these people that are coming here don't know the old Yarmouth Drive-In Site, and I believe it's time now, we have a new charge, and we have new members, and we have Marine Park that's going to be out of the equation, it's going to be an event park, and I would like to see the committee or you folks start engaging on a new name for this parcel of land, whether it be the Park of River Park, or Event Park, Memorial Park, maybe a social media contest or something. I've been in sales all my life, and it's hard to sell when you have old news. Thank you very much.
Great suggestion. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on with our public hearing this evening. Mike Stone will chair that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one licensing matter on tonight, transfer of the weekday and Sunday entertainment license for our Wild Animal Lagoon. Is somebody here on that matter? Want to come forward, please? Good evening. Will you state your name for the record?
I'm Meredith Auer.
Okay. Meredith, I'm going to read the legal announcement, or advertisement, I should say, into the record, and then you could proceed from there. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, has received an application from Meredith Allen Auer, owner, manager of our Wild Animal Kingdom, our Wild Animal Lagoon, sorry, LLC, to transfer the existing annual weekday and Sunday entertainment licenses from WAL LLC Doing Businesses Wild Animal Lagoon, John Hutchins, owner, manager. Entertainment includes a mini golf course located at 44 Route 28 West Yarmouth, Mass. Hours of operation are 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. Hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 24, 2018, in the hearing room at Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth. The selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 p.m. Written comments will be accepted in the selectmen's office until 4:30 p.m. on Friday, July 20, 2018. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. Okay? Tell us, in your own words, what you'd like to do.
So in the beginning of July, or the end of June, I purchased the Wild Animal Lagoon on Route 28, right on the Hyannis Town Line, and basically, it's going to be exactly the same. I'm just looking to transfer ownership and keep everything the same.
Okay, fine. Does anybody in the public want to be heard on this, either in favor or against? Seeing none, anyone on the board have any questions? Looks to me like a pretty straightforward transfer request. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm over.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Do I have a motion to grant the transfer?
So moved.
And we have a second from Eric?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? So you're all set?
Thank you so much. That was easy. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Wonderful. All right. We'll move forward. We're, can I have the, moving right along here, the Matikes School Project update. I know Tracy had wanted to recuse herself from the previous hearings. She'll probably want to return for this discussion.
I'll go grab her.
Yeah.
On the way.
Would be a good idea.
On the way.
She's jabbering out in the hallway.
No, no. I think, Chris, you wanted to update us at this point?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we have two school-related updates for you, both related to the Matikes School Project. The first is a brief update on the regional school agreement negotiating committee. As you're aware, we sent a letter on behalf of the Board of Selectmen to the town of Dennis to get confirmation from them on their position on three items that we were negotiating with them. These were capital costs, operating costs, and then the makeup of the school committee. They sent a letter back to us in response. We emailed that to the board last week, but essentially, Dennis's position is they are satisfied with the current makeup of the agreement related to those matters, and saw no need to further negotiate any of them. I'm aware that members from our side on that committee are in the process of perhaps compiling a draft response to their position, which I'll let Selectman Stone or Selectman Holcomb speak to more in depth. And the second piece is related to, so the school committee took a vote, as I think everyone is aware at this point, on last Monday, to put the Matikes Middle School Building Project directly on the ballot. So what, you know, we can expect at this point, in terms of, in terms of next step, is a process similar to the Cape Tech School, where there'll be a vote, an authorization to the public for a vote on the project, and then we'll need a financing vote as well, depending on how the board wants to proceed on how to finance the project. So Phil Goddett, the town clerk, is meeting tomorrow with the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the Dennis Town Clerk, to determine what date the authorization for the school building will be. Tentatively, they're looking at the first Tuesday of December.
Maybe if we take this in reverse order, if there are comments from the board with regard to the ballot, does anybody want to make a comment, suggestion?
My only question is, we had a conversation here at this board. Was our vote ever conveyed to the school committee and our position on that?
The vote was conveyed and the position was conveyed to the school committee. Just building off of that point, we also sent them a letter on our position in the draft agreement, changes to the draft agreement, and asked the school committee to act on that, which, to this date, they have not, and we have not heard any updates on that. But our position was conveyed, yes.
I mean, what can we say at this point?
Well, I have some ideas.
Oh, good. Because I have some things to say.
Well, yeah. I think everybody does, in one way or another.
You know, I think I've been pretty clear all along that I will not recommend to the taxpayers of this town to fund a school, a new school, under the current regional agreement. And I think that if we know when their vote is going to be, that we should put a, an article on our special town meeting warrant to deregionalize the middle schools. I don't know what effect it has when one town leaves that piece of the regional agreement. It seems simple enough to implement. Each town simply had to vote on it by town meeting. There was no legislation or anything. It was a simple amendment to the regional agreement, and as we have done before, it seems like we could vote to leave it.
Well, the amendment was put forward by the school committee, and that's the thing, everything, so you have to get the school committee to, we have to request the school committee to make that amendment.
That's correct. Was the amendment to leave the funding formula in '06 put forward by the school committee?
The amendment for the funding formula?
When we went from the...
Yeah, the whole thing went through, that went through legislation. Well, Jim's here, he would know, but that went from, any amendment, the way that the original agreement stands now has to come from the school committee.
That was a default. In other words, the state regulations provided that, you know, if we didn't confirm it every town meeting, then by default, we have the chapter 70, so.
Well, if that won't work, and I still think we should do it, whether or not it has any effect, you know, I think that that would give us the opportunity to make our case. But in any event, we need to have some mechanism on our town meeting warrant to discuss this. Because while the school committee may have chosen this route so they could avoid a town meeting vote, which is exactly what they did, because they didn't want the result that would have come from it, they can't prevent us from talking about it and getting information out there and educating the voters.
I think, I think the way the agreement is worded is that...
Yes?
The town, or the Board of Selectmen votes to have it on a town ballot to deregionalize, then that agreement, or that vote, then goes to the school committee for presentation to the entire district.
Well...
I think, I think the first step, as you're suggesting, is going to our town meeting and getting a vote...
Sure.
That could then be forwarded. And are you saying just the middle schools should be deregionalized, or the K through three as well?
You know, I think, you know, baby steps.
Yeah. Well...
I don't think we should go baby steps. I think, I think we're at a crucial time, and, you know, the horse has left the barn. It's, there's no, we have tried from the very beginning, we knew exactly what was going to happen, when we wanted a feasibility study and not a building committee. We knew exactly what was going to happen. Now, we've spent $750,000, and, and I feel really bad for you and Mike, who spent a year, and, and I have no nice way to say this, but it was completely a waste of time. They had no intention of ever changing anything. I'm, I'm just glad we finally got the answer, because the answer is they don't want to change. So now we know, and now we have to make a decision. The problem is, we need a new middle school, and we have a significant amount of reimbursement on the table, so that is troublesome. I don't want to lose that. Having said that, if we have a partner that doesn't want to be our partner, and we have an ME small that needs to be rebuilt, personally, it's not fair to the taxpayers of Yarmouth to forge forward with a four-through-seven school to benefit Dennis. We need a new ME small and a new Matikes. I think we need to be looking at a K to eight, K to seven school on the Matikes property, building one school at this point in time. How we do it and still stay in the process of MSBA and the reimbursement without the support of the school district, I don't know. But I think that we need to be very careful about making sure all of our options are laid out to us, because we're, you know, we're guessing at what is available. I want to know very specifically what options are available to us, and the paths that we potentially could take, and, you know, the benefits and detriments to each decision. I mean, it's a significant amount of money. It's so frustrating to hear the school committee have their discussion and talk about, "Well, we've been saying that you need to renegotiate for a year and a half." Okay, so basically, what you're telling me is you know it's not a fair deal, but yet you're going to push forward with the taxpayers being burdened for 25 to 30 years, paying more than they should. You know, that's a really hard thing for me, because I don't want to lose the school. We need a new school. Everybody knows we need a new school. But how do I say to the taxpayers, how do any of us say to the taxpayers that, to support it, when we're going to be on the hook for more than we should for 25 years? It's, it's tough, but personally, I think if we're going to go, we need to do a Matikes ME small building and go in a completely different direction, and build one school, and protect the people of our town.
I agree. And, you know, I think, you know, I had suggested a letter to MSBA before, and whether or not I agree with the reasons it wasn't sent is irrelevant, but now is the time to send a strong letter to the MSBA, telling them that, you know, in light of Dennis's unwillingness to cooperate on the regional agreement, we have no intention of supporting this new school. And, you know, it's a very good chance that, you know, our lack of support will translate into a lack of support from the community, and that we want to go in the direction that we probably shouldn't have, we should have gone originally, and we probably would have gone, and had we not been convinced to regionalize the middle schools.
You know, the $750,000 is, is a lot of money. It's a lot of money that shows our commitment and our partnership with, with what happened. However, in their, in their response, we don't even, they're not even willing to pay for a percentage of that, and they've been at the table the entire time, having their input into what's going to happen with our money. It's, it's very disappointing, but as I said, I'm glad we have the answer. We know what we're dealing with, which is what we thought from the beginning, but at least now we know. And I think that we need to, you know, we've said it here before, it's like having a marriage that you have a partner with, but yet you're going to go ahead and build a house? Who does that? You can't, you can't have a mortgage with somebody who doesn't want to be your partner, and so unfortunately...
I think we've got a couple of options here already expressed. One is, as a, as a first step, to write to MSBA. I think we need to at least talk about, and before I go to the other board members...
I think and DESE at the same time, because I think in terms of deregionalizing, ultimately, it needs to be approved by DESE, and I think we can clearly show that we have done our due diligence in trying. If they think an agreement is supposed to be an agreement forever, because that's what they get stuck with, that is not the case. That's not the way the state even looks at it. So I think we've, we have laid the groundwork in doing our complete due diligence in, in the DESE allowing us to go in a, in a reorganization, or however you want to call it.
But this is not, I mean, this, believe me, this is an emotional issue for all of us, I think, in one respect or another, as well as being a question in our minds, certainly, fairness and equity between the towns. I think we need to ask ourselves, what would be the consequences of writing to MSBA? Would we likely, would they likely place pressure on Dennis or the school committee? Or would they simply say, "Look, you guys have got to figure out a solution to this, and we're not going to fund anything until you guys work this situation out"? I'm just asking, you know, what are the logical consequences?
Let me just say furthermore, that we have given them our draft. The school committee puts the amendments before the town meetings. The school committee has it within its purview to try to make a change. They have not called the meeting, they have not discussed it in the month and a half that since we've asked them to look at it. It's, the change is within their, they can, the ball's in their court.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if they want to...
You're talking about the school committee's court.
The school committee themselves could put it directly before the voters, and put an amendment before the voters and solve this problem.
You know, I, I think we're even, we're beyond even discussing this. You know, the school committee obviously has no appetite to do anything, because they know if they, if they do what we would like to do, then they would lose the favor of everybody on the other side of the river, and they, they think that the numbers lie over there.
Mm-hmm.
Back to your question of, you know, what would the logical reaction be to a letter is, you know, I, I think it's very likely that they would pull the plug on the project, which would be unfortunate, but then we could probably go, logical people might listen to us and accept that we would like to take a new direction based on our needs, not the superintendent's needs.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, the worst thing, the worst thing that could happen is that we go back in the queue. You know, I, I think you're right, in that we do need a new school. And I think it would be, it would be unfortunate if it, if it were not to happen, but I'm not going to stand before the voters of this town and tell them to spend that kind of money under the current regional agreement.
All right. Mark? Any thoughts at this point?
Well, I think I share much of what Eric has said and what Tracy has said, and let me make sure I understand. Tracy, I think, is suggesting that we study, tell me if I'm wrong, but to look at our options, study our options, and then really look at the pros and cons or the consequences, not for an extended period of time, but to get some handle on what each approach might be, and then come in for a more thoughtful review and pick an option, or pick a path, maybe at the next meeting. And I think, if that's what you're saying, I think that's a sensible approach. I think we should look at many of the points that Eric has raised. I just think it's important to go on record, saying it's wrong to buy... I just think it's important to go on record saying it's wrong to bypass town meeting. I, I think that's a very wrong move. It's a move that I certainly, I, I won't say I was surprised at, but it's just flat out wrong. Town meeting is the governing body in Yarmouth, and I think it's a slap in the face to the voters of Yarmouth. Obviously, I mean, what, what we all know is, is that the formula that we're wrestling with, with this new school is unfair, and I think we need to find ways to consistently stand our ground, insisting that this project, should it go forward, should be financed in a much fairer way. I think that's, that's a position that we've had all along. The question is going to be how to get there, and I know it's frustrating, because every time there's been an attempt, or an approach, or some, some effort made, there's been other ways to sort of circumvent that or get around it. But I think we're at a, we're at a key moment right now, and I think whether it's notifying the, the School Building Assistance Authority, or notifying other authorities, or considering a companion ballot question, maybe, maybe there's a ballot question that sort of calls for a, a, a different formula for financing the school, maybe one that was recommended in, in your negotiations, but I think now is the time, we really need to sort of explore all our options, do it quickly, and then have this discussion in a more informed way, and maybe with some public involvement at our next meeting.
So, so you're saying you may support a, a letter to MSBA and Department of, State Department of Education regarding the...
I, I, I may very well be in support of all of the above, but I think what we need is sort of a healthy review of what the consequences are, the pros and cons of each one. I'm very, very concerned about financially, I think it's our responsibility to understand to the extent that we, for example, let's say, consider deregionalization, what does that mean financially? What does it mean going along? I at least think we should have that information in front of us.
I think along with that is what are the mechanics of deregionalization, because I think, you know, that we've been told, or that is, our negotiating committee has been told, that they'll never agree to any deregionalization approach. Now, whether those statements were with regard to total deregionalization or partial deregionalization, I'm not 100% sure at this point. You know, I've heard other people from, from Dennis say, well, you know, we would consider partial deregionalization, going back to the K to, K to seven, and, you know, on a local basis, and eight to 12 in the high school. So, you know, but, but I'm not sure that that economically is the best approach for us at this stage. I, I just don't know.
I think economically, it's the best thing for us, if we're looking at building a new school at a 65-35 split.
Yeah. Mike, what are your thoughts?
Thank you. I agree with you and Mark that we have to find out what all of our options are, and what the consequences of taking particular actions are going to be. Town council's here, and I, I think he can address some of the issues that, that were raised here, and I'd like to get him involved in the dialogue if, if we could. I agree with Eric that, I mean, I think the school's a great idea, having a new four-grade solution to the Wixon-Madakese aging buildings, but the funding is, is where we have the problem, and I think everybody knows that I, I am in agreement with everyone else on this board, that the, the funding formula that's in place right now is, is very, very burdensome to the Yarmouth taxpayers, and it's not fair, and I wouldn't support the school based on that formula. There'd have to be a change. We, in the course of our negotiation, suggested a 50-50 split on that, and then kind of, only because it was very clear they weren't going to do that, backed off to a 60-40 split, and we didn't get any real favorable response, even at that level, and I think that's frankly our bottom line. I don't think we could afford to go any lower than that. But Jay, if you can come up, there's a couple of things, if you could. My understanding is if we wanted to deregionalize, one of the points that Eric made, grades four through seven, wouldn't, wouldn't the school committee have to sponsor that?
Yeah. The, there is a school committee component to it, as well as town, there's a town meeting involvement. Given the current makeup of things, and we're happy to prepare for your next meeting a memo of all the options and applicable procedures, and the way other towns and other regional agreements have gotten out of them, or have approached them, given the current makeup and the intransigence of this current committee in terms of allowing certain changes, it's going to be difficult, under the current makeup of the school committee, to make much hay. We could, we could, town meeting votes have a place in it, they might be more advisory in nature in some respects, but they can set the table, they could direct certain people to, to try and do things, form committees, and do other things like that. Another approach that we talked about today a little bit, when I met with Mike and Norm, was the special act approach, which is what some towns in the western part of the state have done more recently in larger regions. The difficulty there, and even the difficulty in a more permissive deregionalization, is the financial implications of it, and the mechanics of it, and the obligations that the, the state would look to, and DESE would look to in terms of the financial impact to the other town. So you have to think about both the financial impact to your town, which, if it was permissive, DESE would take a look at this, as well as the other towns. So if deregionalization left you with a facility, but left them without a comparable facility, you may end up building them a school in order to satisfy DESE. Similarly, under the special act process, it's the same thing. You can't have a special act that's unique to your community that financially impacts another community. It's just not allowed. In the case of a region out in the western part of the state, a town did successfully withdraw, but it would, there were several other towns sharing other facilities, and they were able to show that it didn't impact them. Here, a little harder to do, because of all the shared physical facilities just between two players. Not impossible. Pembroke removed, got themselves removed from the Silver Lake District, not super far from here, a significant financial investment. A lot of people in Pembroke very wary about it when it happened. 10, 15 years later, I think everyone, or most people in Pembroke would say it's the best decision they ever made. So there was a lot of initial pain, and a lot of rancor, and a lot of hurt feelings, but it ended up being best for them, and I represent some Silver Lake communities that stayed in, good for them too. Solved a lot of issues for them too. They got some new facilities, they got an infusion, and they were able to deal with things in some smaller clumps. So, the fact that those procedures are difficult, whether it's on the permissive side, or on the kind of more direct side, unilateral, special act side, doesn't make them impossible, but it, it will be some hurdles. We're happy to provide. I think this group kind of knows a, a little bit about this, and knows that it's going to be difficult, and there's a lot of procedural hurdles either way, but perhaps the public, and for discussion purposes, it's good to get that out in the open. We're happy to, to do that.
Now, when you're talking about permissive, you're talking about when two towns agree.
Working within the, within the confines of the agreement as it exists.
Which is not likely. So, the only other real option to, to deregionalize would be a special act of legislature, probably.
Well, I mean, there are other kind of multi-step approaches to, obviously, the current makeup. There are political solutions to these things. These are elected officials, and they are subject to the, to the ballot box. So those are political solutions too. The makeup of the current school committee is such that they're not interested. Two or three years from now, who knows? I mean, those are, those are political solutions too, and that's what the critics of these kind of unilateral approaches would say. You don't like it? Elect new school committee members. Not so easy. But that's, those, those are the other range of solutions, working within the school committee, or shaping the, the nature and the makeup of the school committee to, to fit more the, the regular voter, not just the, the folks who are interested solely and monolithically in the, in their desires for either new facilities or operating needs.
So am I correct that you couldn't deregionalize four through seven simply by a vote in, in Dennis and a vote in Yarmouth?
No, I mean, you're, you're still working within the, the agreement, so whatever you do, you have to work within either the requirements of the agreement and under the statutes, or go the special act route. If it's in the agreement now, you gotta, you gotta work within that. So, any change to that is going to be affected. Now, I would say that if it's a minor, of, more of a smaller clump of deregionalization, that Dennis would have the facilities to take care of if you deregionalized on that front, then it makes a special act more palatable, because, again, the measuring stick by the recent Worthington case is that, okay, we are going to pass a special act that benefits a certain one community, provided it doesn't hurt another community. So approaching it in, in smaller clumps may be more palatable to the legislature.
I think, you know, it's interesting, because in this case, Dennis has the two schools now that they had previously, when they, when they educated K through seven in their community, so their, their facilities still exist. So, you know, we...
Beneath high school.
Right. What's that?
Beneath the high school level.
Beneath the high school, right. K through seven, they have those facilities, it's not as if those have, have been closed or anything of that nature.
Yeah.
In our case, we've had a couple of facilities closed over the last number of years, and, but, we need, we need to replace Matikes in one way or another, and, you know, that, I think, I think what Tracy talked about, having everything on one campus certainly makes a lot of sense, but, you know, first things first, you know.
Again, the, the Worthington case, which was kind of a landmark case, it was just decided this year, is, is that as long as this, you can put as much burden on yourself as you want through the special act, if you are negatively affecting another community, and you're not subsidizing that, what, what their needs are, then the, the legislature are upon a challenge, which Dennis would have the right to do, then that legit, then that act isn't going to happen. So the more you can make sure that, hey, you guys have everything you need, and here's a few bucks to make sure you retrofit those schools appropriately for that age group, and that's in there.
I gave them $750,000 already.
Yeah.
Jay, what would it be a rough timeframe to start a process to deregionalize the four through seven, because there's not going to be a big financial impact to Dennis if, if you do that, whereas if you deregionalize through the high school, there probably would be. So, assuming, you know, we're going to take the smaller bite of the apple and pursue a four through seven deregionalization, what do you see for a process?
Permissive or the unilateral approach?
Unilateral.
Well, I would expect a significant amount of scrutiny by the House and, you know, legislative council over this. Obviously, you have to come up with a plan, and there has to be studies done, so it, I would guess, and then you may want to double it, just because that's what these things take.
Sure, I know it's...
I would guess you're looking at a year-long process, at least, just to get, you need studies and plans, you have to look, secure the necessary funds to do it, you're looking at a year or more to, that would be my guess. It's, it is not, it is, especially in a two-town region, a bigger town region where, if we were just a small player, easier, and I would encourage, and I will cite to this when we, when we provide a memo to you, what the court said in the Worthington example, because they were kind of, they could kind of hide their needs and their impact to the rest of the region.
Spread it around.
Spread it around. They were able to absorb it without any significant impact, and that's what the court found. Much harder in a smaller region.
I have another question, Mr. Chairman, if I might, and, and this is for Chris as well, but is it, am I correct that if Yarmouth decided they didn't, and were successful in the ballot, where our voters said they wouldn't support this based on the current If Yarmouth wanted to do a two-school solution in town, the ME small school and a Matikes school, we, we would lose the state reimbursement, wouldn't we?
Perhaps. I think you would need, I think the voters would need to reject the current proposal as it stands. So the MSBA, a few weeks ago, approved the schematic design of the current proposal at Station Ave, and so with that approval from the state, and then with now the school committee's vote on how to authorize this project, I think the only way that you're going to potentially see a revision to the project scope is if the current proposal fails. But that's not to say, and I believe Dan has experience with this, that we would, we would remain in the queue and be able to put forward an alternative proposal that we felt, and the school district felt, would be supported by the community. But I can get an official...
But I always thought at the outset of this, we were looking at Matikes, and then it was the state that suggested that we look at Wixon as a, as a two-school resolution to this, but I was always of the understanding, if we wanted to do two Yarmouth schools, that would not, they would not entertain that.
I think that that's because at the time, the statement of interest had not been put in for ME small, but I think it has since.
Right.
Yeah, it has, yes. Well...
And Wixon's statement of interest had been previously, and because it was in a different community, which made it make sense to them, but, you know, it's a different, different scenario.
Well, it sounds as if the board would like to consider this as, as an item on the next, next agenda. I'm not sensing comfort with moving forward with an immediate letter to MSBA. I'm hearing that we should...
I think if we can, if we can get it at our next meeting, I think that...
About two weeks is your next meeting?
August 7th is the next meeting.
August 7th.
Yeah, we can have a memo. I mean, this is not overly complicated, we'll, we'll lay it out, and...
I think that'd be helpful.
One of the things that we're really fortunate of is, and Rich has done the legwork, we did an investigation preliminarily in terms of what the costs associated to deregionalization is not that long ago.
Mm-hmm.
So, and so has Dennis. So in terms of knowing, you know, about equalization and the fairness and burden that it might put on either one of them, I think we're both familiar with what that number...
That's, that's a, that's a really good, gives you a big head start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think it would be helpful to have that information at our, at our meeting.
I'm sure it's probably outdated somewhat, but...
I certainly would find it helpful. Mr. Chairman, I have just one other question for council.
Yes.
My understanding is that if the board of the school committee actually makes the decision to go to the voters, the clock ticks in terms of when the election is to be held, is that true?
And the...
That there's actually, the clock, the clock is ticking in terms of when the actual vote must take place? Maybe I'm, maybe I'm clear on that.
It's not like the other clock under 16D, which is a, a short timeframe. I don't recall a specific hard and fast deadline under 16N.
I think they backed into their vote based on the dates that they had to hit for the funding.
I see.
So they, they backed, I think it was like, within so many 90 days of an actual vote, they had to take a vote.
Right.
So is this a ballot question that will, I'm just, I'm just trying to determine, when will this be on the ballot?
Probably early December.
Yeah, there's been some discussion.
So it won't be on the November ballot, it will be in a December special election?
Correct. That vote should be, that date should be set by tomorrow, Craig, because...
By tomorrow, that's right.
The, the early indication is that they're looking at December.
Oh, that's interesting.
And, and interestingly, Phil was saying that absentee ballots would be available, because, you know, that's the time of year when people are leaving, would be available about 35 days prior to that election date.
And Mark, one of the reasons for that is too, for the, for the federal election, the polling places are open from essentially all day.
Right.
Whereas for something like this, it could go a half-day or two-thirds of a day.
Probably 12 o'clock.
So, it's, that there's a discussion of that.
Wow, that's...
So...
It's amazing.
Yeah.
So they could actually have an election and literally cut off the time that people have the opportunity to vote?
They can.
It's outrageous.
They can.
And that's in the law that authorizes them to pursue this path?
The time and place is set by the, the, well, the polling places, as I said in, in a memo, I believe, are, are established by the, by the community, but the time...
Yeah.
And the date.
The hours.
And the hours.
The hour span that they have to allow it is set, but they can pick the time. So I remember like Cape Tech had a discussion about it, they, I think they only had to have, I don't know how many hours, but they, they picked like from 11 to 7, or something like that, it doesn't span the whole...
They did that, and then Dennis Fire District too, when they had the vote on the...
So it's a little peculiar, and then you get into a situation where if, as we get closer to that date, and the, your... closer to that date, and the, your board wants to contemplate whether or not to consider any potential debt, whether you do it now or you do it next spring, but whether or not you wanna do it in tandem with a debt exclusion vote? It doesn't have to be on the same day, it could be before or after. Whether you would do that on the same day, which then is a separate ballot, I mean, the mechanics of it, it falls all over each other.
That's fascinating. If I may, Mr. Chairman, is it possible for the Board of Selectmen to also add, if, once that date is chosen, we have a period of time perhaps to add our own or another proposal to perhaps put on that ballot?
For a ballot?
Yeah. On that ballot, it's, let's say-
Not on that ballot.
No, so that ballot only has to be exclusive to that.
We could have a conjunctive date, ballot date. We could have our own, we could hold our own-
Correct.
Election ballot on the same day.
Separate piece of paper, though.
Yep.
Got it. That's interesting.
Okay. All right.
And who pays for the election?
Who do you do?
The school district?
The school district pays, bears all the cost for this, of course, out of their operating budget, so indirectly the taxpayers do, but they, it comes out of their current operating budget.
Surprise, surprise, that it comes back to the taxpayers.
Yeah, it will, under the same formula.
All right. We'll, we'll schedule that for the next meeting. We've got a lot of research and information to pull together for that meeting, so-
And if that old study is available, I'd love to see a copy of it as well.
Yeah, I'm sure Rich can-
Rich is here.
So, we have it, yeah. And so, if we can get that forwarded to Jay, that'd be great.
We'll coordinate everything, yep.
Okay, all right. You know, it might be helpful to forward it to the board as soon as possible as well.
Oh, absolutely.
We could study it and-
With Jay's opinion.
Good sleeping material. All right.
Thank you very much, Jay.
Thank you very much, Jay. You know, we did touch on another matter in, earlier when we were talking with Jay, and that is a strategy at ballot time, and in order to assure that people had the opportunity to vote if they wished to, and, you know, we might wanna consider, and we can talk about it next week, that if we get to a vote, or we wanna have, or if we're faced with a vote on the entire school issue on December 4th, in November, for the national election, we might want to have resources available distributing absentee ballots, talking about the issues, whatever the case may be, you know, and that would-
What's the law pertaining to that?
I guess we'd have to discuss that at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that's something that we should know if we have to create our own PAC.
Yeah.
If we're allowed to, what, what the rules are.
There's actually a very good treatise for this. There is a lot of material that you can provide, and where you can provide it, and how you can do it without actually taking a position within the electioneering itself.
Okay.
And then there's stuff outside of the election process itself that you can, where there's an opportunity to be more of an advocate. So, we, we have that treatise. This is not the first time that this is among what a Board of Selectmen can do in terms of the limits of their advocacy on a matter that's coming up for an election, and we can certainly provide that.
Okay, that would be helpful.
On, on materials. Most of it in the official sense would be, would be policy neutral, but it would be providing information, and then there is opportunities outside of that for more advocacy, provided that it's not using actual taxpayer resources. So, policy neutral, you can use some resources, policy bias, you, you can certainly use your bully pulpit to get some information out of it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, that would be helpful as well. Okay. All right. Let's move on then to our next item on the agenda, the wastewater update and possible vote.
Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, so we wanted to provide the board with a, with a brief update on where we are with our efforts on wastewater and clean water, and our partnerships with our three neighboring communities. So, first off, we, we had a recent meeting with the town of Barnstable and Jeff Colby and Dave Young to discuss initial logistics of what a potential partnership would look like with that community. I think that was a pretty good meeting, and we, we have scheduled a follow-up in the coming weeks. The other update is we've continued to meet on a monthly basis with the Dennis and Harwich tri-town group. We had a pretty good meeting on Friday where the Mass Secretary of Economic Development Housing, Jay Ash, actually came down and met with the group and heard some of our concerns here, and it provided us with an opportunity to be able to speak to the state on some of our challenges down here, certainly from a financial standpoint, and began the discussion about how perhaps the state could help mitigate some of these costs down here. The other piece, and Dave Young is in the audience, if there's any particular questions, is we talked about to get this process started, we needed to file special legislation that just enables the towns to begin to draft an agreement amongst the, the three communities. So, that draft language is in your packet. If the board wants to take a vote on it tonight, you can. I will say that the language is currently in, up at the State House with House Counsel. They may have some minor wording or grammatical revisions, but it's our understanding that the meat of the, of the content here will remain unchanged, so. But if the board would prefer to wait until a later time in which that's finalized, we get that back, we can present that to you, that's certainly fine as well. So, I'm happy to have Dave or, or Mark, both very educated in this, provide you guys with an overview of the bill.
Sure. I think one of the questions I have for Dave, would it be possible, Mr. Chairman, to invite Dave Young to come to the table?
Yes, please.
It's my understanding that, and I couldn't stay for the entire meeting on Friday, but my understanding, Dave, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that all three Boards of Selectmen are basically looking, have, are reviewing this, this draft proposal, and it's our expectation that the other boards will act to either endorse or authorize this to be submitted. Is that still where we're at?
Yes, that's correct. The state representatives have indicated at the meeting on Friday and the Senator that in order to file the special legislation, they would need a positive action from each of the boards in the three towns. Positive action meaning a vote to file. I've been to the other two boards last night and tonight. One board voted to, because they had already voted to file the special legislation pending review of the final, they wanted to wait and see the actual final version. The 7-11-18 version that I think you have is the version that's being circulated to Counsel at the Legislature. The Dennis Board voted to approve that legislation tonight, but pending any changes being made, being brought back to them. So, as Chris indicated, it's up to you if you wanna vote that 7-11 pending the version. The version that we discussed two weeks ago, the 7-11 version is an update of that, and what that does is it incorporates your counsel and counsel from the other two communities, edits and reviews to it. There's nothing really, quote, of substance. They moved some things around, but there's really nothing of substance that changed to it.
I think we're an amendment behind. We have a draft dated 6/29.
Right. Yeah, that was the version prior to your counsel, and the only thing that changed in that version was Section 2, the last sentence. They reworded that versus the version that is in 6/29. Your 6/29 version, the last words are Dennis, Harwich, and Yarmouth in accordance with Section 7 passed at the town meetings of said towns in 2018. That has been reworded to say Dennis, Harwich, and Yarmouth to be approved at town meetings of those participating towns, as will be supplemented and amended by those towns in accordance with Section 7. So, references a future town meeting versus referencing the prior town meeting. Everything else is the same in the 6/29 version, is it, or I forget what it is?
That's what we have.
Okay.
Well, then, Mr. Chairman, I think to move this along, I would, just to kind of carry on the discussion, I would, I would move to, for the board to authorize the submission of this legislative proposal as drafted or amended on July 11th, authorizing the towns of Yarmouth, Dennis, and Harwich to form a clean water community partnership.
I'll second it.
So, what happens when amendments come from the state? How do we handle that?
Make them contingent to-
I would add a language contingent on amendments, having the opportunity to review any proposed amendments by Legislative Council.
If we're gonna reserve the right to review amendments, then what's the point in voting on this, P. Smith?
Well, we have a deadline, we have to file the bill. Most likely, it will, there will be some proposed amendment, but at least we've met the filing deadline to get it in.
Yeah, one of, what the representatives indicated to us is there's really one decision tree that needs to be made, and that is whether this special legislation will require a roll call vote of the Legislature in order to pass it or not. If it requires a roll call vote, it's unlikely to be acted upon, or they filed out that it probably won't be acted upon because their session ends July 31st. And so, that would not be taken up until probably next February, March timeframe. So, that's why we're trying to move it forward a little bit quicker now, because if it doesn't require a roll call, and they can file it before the end of the session, meaning July 31st, then they can have it passed in just an open session in the fall because it doesn't require all the Legislature to be there. And that's actually how the-
It's called David informal session.
Yes, and that's how the MFN Regional Waste, Mansfield, Foxville, Norton, special legislation was actually approved, which is the template that we've been using for this.
By roll call?
No. Without a roll call?
Without roll call.
No, if I could just add to that comment, it's, it's not uncommon for the Legislature, when there's a non-controversial bill, typically something like a home rule petition, to act on the measure during informal session. So, that's why getting it in a time for the deadline allows us to move this forward.
Understood, but how do we make sure that what we're voting on is actually not, I mean, I imagine it would just be small changes, but it would be nice to be able to see a final documentation that we're putting before the Legislature before we do. So, how do we, how do we work it into the context of a motion that we're able to still move forward and be able to make that final approval?
Well- I think if you voted to approve it, subject to any changes coming back to you for final review, that that would send a positive message to the state reps to keep moving and keep moving this forward, and to the Legislative Council that the three towns are serious about this, but any changes they do wanna see for transparency's sake, certainly.
I wouldn't have any problem supporting it with that additional caveat that any changes have to come back for approval of the board.
Let's see, you offered that-
Yep.
Amendment to your motion.
I'll amend my second.
Okay. Any further questions or comments on this, at this point? I just have one. I mean, this, this doesn't bind us to anything at this stage with regard to an agreement with Dennis or Harwich. I mean, this is enabling legislation in terms of the partnership, and, you know, we have more issues to work out with, with Dennis, as, as I think you've seen this evening, and, you know, I, I don't think the board is gonna look at a, another partnership in a, in a entirely different light from what we've looked at in terms of what's been going on with Dennis with the school agreement, and-
Yeah, as we reviewed at the last meeting, there's sort of four steps.
Mm-hmm.
This is step two. Step one, you approve the filing of special legislation at your May town meeting. Step two is filing of the special legislation. Step three is developing the agreement, which is where all the details are.
Yeah.
And step four is not only you have to approve it, but your town meeting has to approve, of each participating community has to approve it. So, theoretically, if three were in there and one didn't, then even that doesn't go forward.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Not to interrupt you, but would it be preferable to amend that motion just to afford for any minor changes that come back, that are like grammatical or that capitalize a word that the board is okay with? So, perhaps a final review by the board for any substantial changes to the bill that may change, I mean, I don't know the particular language, but, you know, any, any changes that change the intent of the act instead of having a final review for small, minor language tweaks?
Yeah, the intent of the motion is not to review grammatical-
Yeah.
Or punctuation. I think if there's a proposal that's substantive, David suggested that what we may get back is whether or not it's a roll call vote or not. So, I think that's, that's, I mean, if that's the range of potential issues, I think they're very manageable. So, I just assume we can confine it to that.
I think if we leave the motion alone, we're fine.
With you, Mike, yeah.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Hoes, abstained? Okay, fine, we're set to go. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Okay, we'll go on to the drive-in site utilization meeting, and-
Good evening, Jim. How are you tonight?
Good evening. We're ahead of schedule.
Wonderful. You gonna keep it that way?
I'll do my best to keep you on track.
Is this PowerPoint in our, is this a PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, it is.
Do we have a copy of it?
You should have a copy of that with, in your packet.
Makes sense.
Kathy, yeah?
No, I just finished today.
No?
Okay.
So, you're just gonna have to follow along, take notes and-
I can't see it.
Pay attention?
Ask questions. You want my cheaters?
I just found my glasses. Thank you.
So, as you all recall, we were here back in May to give you our, our findings for our feasibility study, and I'm gonna try to do this. And we came to you with five recommendations, of which they're presented here. First and foremost, we recommended that we retain the drive-in site for recreational use and that we do not dispose of it. Establish a permanent use for festivals and special events. Move forward with a riverwalk plan with the preferred concept that we had brought to at our last meeting. And permit and design the riverwalk and boardwalk together and proceed with construction as funding. So, that was generally what we had talked about, and the general consensus of the board was that you supported basically what we had said as far as our presentation. We would develop a policy and conduct events, including processes and users, so we're looking at ways that we can go ahead and use the property in the future. One of the things we need to do is, is have a new charge. We asked you if we could go away, at least I did, and you said no. So, we've come up with a new charge, and that, I think, is in your packets, correct?
I'm attached to the number.
So, we reviewed the work, task force, tasks that were presented to us and have revised that charge to meet what is now looked at as moving forward with the drive-in site redevelopment. Currently, the committee sits at seven members. We have one vacancy, and we'd ask that through your nomination process that you appoint Bud Nugent, who is one of our alternates to become a full member, and that would give us a full board again. So, that, that's one of the actions we'd ask you to take either this evening or at your next meeting to appoint Bud. Let's see. I have a note here that says, discuss possibility of changing the committee name. There's been some discussion about that, as to whether we need to continue as a drive-in site utilization committee, or the Parker's River Park Project Committee, or some other fancy name. fancy name. You can name us what you want. We understand our mission, I think, but I think that also comes through the idea that this project as a whole is going to need a new name at some point in time, and I think that's some of the things that we can talk about, and maybe we can even do something as simple as having a contest as to how to name the new, new venue or something. I don't know how we get to name some of the parks in town, they just come up with names, and who gets to do that, I'm not sure, but that's one of the things we need to discuss. So one of the things we talked about was the short-term and interim uses that would become more permanent use. As you know, August 13th is a concert that, that has been... Excuse me, 18th, I say 13th, that you approved a permit for. So this is a general layout of what the facility will look like. And over the last couple of weeks, on the 19th of July, we had AmeriCorpse, the DPW staff, and the beautification team, which I'm going to have to ask somebody to clarify who that is, because I don't know, but they did a great job. This is the site, and we have an issue with a mulch area, but as you can see, they were out here cleaning up the debris and making the site presentable. This is what it looks like now. As you can see, all the grass has been mowed, and the area has been cleaned up significantly. I'll point out that we've talked about a woodchip area. That's this high spot right here, and if I go back, that's this area right here. This is from removal brush and debris that had been piled there through the years from hurricanes, et cetera, and we gather stuff. So this is kind of soggy right there. One of the things we're going to do is when, after the event takes place, speak with the coordinators of the event and see how the facility worked for them, whether this is something that we need to address on a, on a more immediate basis for future events, or if it's something that we can build into the actual development of the property at a future date. If it's not a problem and they can continue to do events, then we'll, we'll address it when we develop the site as a whole. Otherwise, we may need to go back and look at that as a, an issue. And again, these are the pictures of the debris that was there. So as a result of that, we had some concept planned for event and riverwalk, and this is, I'm sure you've seen before. And we need to coordinate with the event specialists to identify amenities, things that need to be done there. So do we need water, Wi-Fi, electricity, those types of things? So again, this event on the 18th is another opportunity for learn more about how we can make the, the site efficient. We also talked about it at our last meeting, but you're, you're hearing it already completed before we were able to get down to you, but talk about some of the, the potential rules and regulations for utilizing the facility. One of our concerns is to make sure that we protect the waterway, so, so events like on the 18th, in the future, we may ask that you consider a deposit to make sure that that's protected and that, you know, we'll find a bunch of stuff in the, in the river because of these events. But that's, again, part of the task that we're looking to do, is to give you a, a charge. To be able to do all this and to move forward, one of the things that we're going to be looking at is CPA funding, and let me get back to it. So we want to be able to, to define the project fuller and have the opportunity to, to get into the application for CPA funding this year. Deadline's coming quickly, so we're going to need some, some discussion from the board and some direction so that we can, if the board agrees, move forward with CPA funding. And it has been, you know, the general consensus of this board that, that we agree that this project should move forward. Where we've done, run into some issues is with regards to the boardwalk. So this is, as you recall, we talked to you about options and how we proceed. This is option 1C. This is the option that has simply just a loop around here, and as you'll notice, no spur. We're recommending that we move forward with this part of the process, because there are fewer unknowns with regards to things like borings and what we're going to find out in the marsh. And it will give us more solid cost estimates, and we can proceed more immediately with the project by going in this direction. If we proceed with the next, this is a more costly and time-consuming process, because we're going to need to find funding to get additional borings. If you recall, one of the points that we had made to you at our feasibility study was that we haven't had sufficient funds or the ability to find out how deep the peat is in this area, as to whether it'd be financially feasible to go forward. If we find that it's rather shallow, then that's one cost number, but if we find that it's very deep, it might be cost prohibitive to even consider moving forward. So this is one of the areas that we need some direction from the board. Again, we can move forward if we go with just 1C, and then at a later date, seek funding to do borings, or at this time, seek funding and do the borings and get the answer to move forward completely. Again, this is a more timely process to, to do this. The committee as a whole believes that the boardwalk is, is central to the success of this project. We, we are split in our discussions as far as what that boardwalk is and how it's developed, as to whether we go here, here. That's generally something we, we don't necessarily completely agree on. I think our split was three to two, or something like that. So as a result of that, we need to do a few things. We need to, first of all, get a vote from you on our revised charge, telling us what to do. We need you to appoint Bud Nugent as a permanent member. Short-term minimal improvements for 2018 events. Can you elaborate on that? So we're pretty much done. Input, so on the 18th of August, we'll hear from the event planners as to what went right and what went wrong and what they need. From there, we need to develop a concept plan for the event area and coordinate with the event organizers and preferred riverwalk layout, so we can start moving forward with permitting and, and funding, seeking funding sources as to what the ultimate result will be. So we need you to, to give us some final decisions on 1C, and to have a manageable defined project in preparation for CPA application fundings. You know, we think 1C is going to allow us to move forward, but the, the longer version is something that we can do at, at a future date, or we can do it right now. And that's, that's really kind of, in a nutshell, Reader's Digest version. Questions, comments? If my, any of my colleagues have anything else to add?
No, it's fine.
Mark? Well, once again, thank you for all the work that you continue to do on this project. I support each of the recommendations, and my only question is, in terms of moving forward, do we need, do we need multiple votes, or can we adopt your recommendations just in unison, as outlined in the memo? That would be my question.
I would have to, to yield to the chair, but I would think that you would need to have a vote to, separate to appoint Mr. Nugent as the, as a full-time member.
Because he is currently an alternate.
He's an alternate.
So he could go from being an alternate to a regular member. Okay. Is that the only vacancy you have, or is that, I see, okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay. And with regards to the boardwalk? Need a vote, or?
I mean, I think you wrote your summary asking the board to approve option 1C. I think if you want to discuss the other option and move in order with that, that would kind of break it out, but I think it's simple if you keep it all in one.
And speaking only for myself, I, I think, you know, I'd kind of like to hear what, it was a split decision, and what is, what is the substance of, of the discussion at this stage around?
I, I can only speak from the, the positive side, and I think there's others that voted not in favor of the spur, and I'd ask that they can address that themselves. I think it's, to my line of thinking, we've looked at all of the negatives and all the positives to building the entire boardwalk. I believe that the larger boardwalk is a greater draw to the community. It's, cost is an issue that we need to determine, obviously, is the cost of the borings, but assuming the boring costs are, you know, not significant, then I think the benefit outweighs the, the negatives of anything that has been presented through our feasibility study. I'm, I'm sure that, I think David was one of the negatives to the extension, and I guess he can address that, and if the others are here, they can as well.
Sure. The, the concern that I had about the entire length, running, running at the entire length over Seagull Beach, was that frankly, I didn't see the utility of connecting the two sites in that fashion. I didn't see that the, the destination of Seagull Beach having any association with the boardwalk that would justify the expense to go the entire distance, even across the creek and through the marsh to the other side. The, the counter view, as I understand it, is, is primarily that the boardwalk itself is the destination, that it would be the draw just for the, the fact that it's there, and to be able to utilize it, and for that reason, it should go as far as we can go, and connect as many things as possible to give it as many options as possible. And I, I understand the point of view. I think perhaps my tact was that, as a practical matter, a shorter boardwalk would save a good deal of money and would eliminate some of the concerns environmentally and from neighbors about crossing the actual creek and getting all the way across into the marsh, and probably would get it done faster if we were doing a little bit less, at least in the first phase. I'm not opposed to doing the whole thing. I understand the argument, particularly after we had this final discussion, that the boardwalk itself may very well be a destination, rather than thinking of the beach as the destination. And the example of the sandwich boardwalk was, was brought up many times. That's, that's perhaps a policy decision that we would like to have, and ultimately, you'll make that decision in town meeting, Will, but we haven't really had any feedback back from you as to which you think is the more appropriate fork in the road that we should take in, in terms of at least the next phase of this, this planning. And obviously, when we presented to you the initial report and the dichotomy of, of options, you hadn't seen any of it, and we didn't expect any feedback from you that night. But I think at some point in the future of this project, we would benefit from your input as to which direction you think is the more palatable from your point of view, considering the cost as well as the public policy and neighborhood considerations, and, and which direction you want us to go in, to pursue, whether we should do it in phases only, getting first to the, the inner circle and then to a shorter pier, and then to a longer pier, or whether you would like us to explore the whole thing right up front and see how the cost is going to shake down, and find out at that point how feasible it is. There is, as, as was mentioned, a cost consideration in just finding out what the cost is, because the, the issue of doing borings in the marsh is apparently quite a shot in the dark. If we do three or four borings, they may come out great, and the next one's going to go right down to the, you know, bedrock. We don't know. So the, the more we can do, the better we have of a realistic estimate of what we're going to encounter when we get to construction phases. But again, there's a fair expense involved in just doing those borings, and, and trying to get a geological analysis of what's down there.
And I think that's, that's really key to the whole, how far you extend. If you extend a short spur, or if you go over the, the river and connect, that's a discussion that would, would need to be happening, but the bottom line is, we just don't know what the cost would be. So that's why we come with two options. Option 1C allows us to move forward, because we have some pretty concrete cost estimates. We know what that part of this is going to cost. The question then becomes is, do we wait and apply for additional funding? Because it's going to cost us probably another $70,000 to, to do significant borings to get the information that allows us to, to get a cost estimate to go the whole way. So, you know, the question is, do you go, go for everything now, or you just get the, you know, the 1C done and figure out in the future whether you want to expand it? That's a call that, that really you have to make as the policymakers of the, of the community.
And there is, there's no dissension in the, in the committee that 1C, which is a, a land-based walking path, followed by a sort of C-shaped elevated walkway around the perimeter of essentially uplands. It does not go out into the marsh. So that one doesn't need the same kind of testing and examination. It's going to require approvals from conservation and, and other agencies, but it's not out into the marsh. It's along the perimeter of the little outland, upland area that skirts out from the riverwalk. We all agree that, that something along that lines at a minimum is necessary to make this a complete project. So there's no hesitation about, about our recommending that, that very least we do that as early in, in the process as possible.
No, of course, the other part of it is, there's an economy of scale as far as permitting, et cetera, so that if you do it all at once, you know, that process is a little less expensive than if you were to do it piecemeal. If you do this section and then come back at a later date, not only will the costs of construction, but the cost of permitting and that type of thing, you'll have to start a lot of it all over again. So, again, these are considerations that, that we just can't make, you need to.
There was also a suggestion made to us at, at a couple of points, that funding may also depend on what we're recommending, that some projects might be willing to fund a project that included a boardwalk, but not a project that just included the riverwalk, so that there may be more money available for some variations on the project, particularly, as Jim says, doing more of it initially to, to consolidate the permitting and the duplication of some of those processes. So we, we don't want to foreclose some possible funding sources by eliminating or questioning whether we're going to do the boardwalk across the marsh, but if we're not, we should know it as, at least as early as possible, so we don't go down the wrong avenues.
Yeah, well, speaking for myself, obviously, I, I think the phased approach obviously makes sense. I think, starting with the 1C, as you call it, option 1C, I think has a, makes a great deal of sense. I understand the, the concerns about the larger boardwalk going, the cost, the uncertainty of it. I tend to be, when it comes to development, more of an incrementalist by nature. You know, you do that aspect of the project where you, where you have the highest degree of certainty, and then you become informed by that project. You will learn from being out on the site, doing the work, that it can help you in terms of assessing, you know, subsequent phases. So I, I would, just with the specific question of, do you do the whole thing or, or work initially with 1C, I, I would recommend that we go forward with 1C.
I understand both sides of that debate, and you both, you know, have some valid points to make. I would be in favor of 1C, because it doesn't carry with it the same environmental impact, and it addresses the concerns of the neighbors better than the full boardwalk. The other thing is, if I understand correctly, and Chris, you can maybe enlighten me on this, I, I don't think insurance typically covers those boardwalks, like, for example, the one that Bass Hole. And if we have storms like that, and you have a massive boardwalk going across there, and we have these ice floes, you're going to be, it is, and they're not insurable, you're going to be talking about a substantial financial loss as opposed to something that's more conservative.
Mike, if you don't mind, or Mr. Chairman, I could address that point as well. Just some added information. And Kathy, tell me if I've got this wrong, but I believe that this is in a designated coastal barrier resources area, which what, what that means is it prevents the federal government from coming in and spending money. And so if a project is located in a designated coastal barrier resources area, that, that's a portion of the project that won't be eligible for federal funding. All right? It may be, it, maybe it's eligible for state funding, because it's designated that. So for the actual construction, as well as any kind of reconstruction, rehabilitation, replacement, or whatever, going forward, were that part of the plan going forward, then you could basically write off the federal government... you could basically write off the federal government being a partner in that project. So just for the record, I wanted to make that clear while you brought it up.
Mike, did you have any other comments?
No, those were, those were my initial comments. The other thing is, and I know this, nobody seems to share this belief, but I still have a concern about vandalism with a boardwalk that extends from one end to the other. I mean, I don't know how you really would monitor that with young people who could have exit access both ways that maybe congregate out there in the middle of that facility. But I'm mindful that the chief came to a meeting and he supported it going from one side to the other. But that is a concern that I have in terms of the integrity of the boardwalk or to extend all the way across, you know, are the, are family people going to have free access to that without it being impeded by people that might be up to mischievous things? I'm not convinced that that's a good idea from that standpoint either.
So again, because we haven't built anything, you could say, build a spur, but don't go over the river and don't connect to Seagull Beach. Build a spur. You know, that's part of, again, how far do you go? But again, until you know the borings is going to help you answer the questions, how far you would go.
Make a motion that the board approve option 1C at this time.
Second?
Further discussion, questions? Okay. Yeah, I just said one more question or so on this. In terms of timing, the drive-in site, the festival area and the boardwalk and the park, what's the vision there in terms of timing for, if we said go ahead with 1C, then what comes first? And, you know, I'm excited about the events area and about the riverwalk and, you know, just kind of so-so on the rest of it, I guess.
I'd like to think we're going to break some records on getting things done.
We're also excited about the festival area and that's why, as Jim said, we think it's important for us to meet with at least the one organization that is now planning the second event there and get feedback from them, short-term and long-term, as to what they need, what they think the public needs. But I suppose also to broaden that interview process beyond actual event users to other potential users and find out what they want and what they need. And that is intended to get it up and running and keep it running without hesitation and without major expense. And to deal with the expense as we find out what needs to be done in order to make it more functional. But as you can see from some of the pictures, it's already made vast improvements over what was sitting there idle a year ago. And we want to encourage anybody to come along with an appropriate use out there. And one of the things you asked us for, I think, last time was to help you formulate a policy statement for this property. What do we want there? What don't we want there? Under what circumstances? Perhaps size limitations on the number of people and ultimately what kind of a fee schedule we need to get some contribution back from users to help it keep rolling. So that's one of the things we have high on our list to get back to you as to the event area.
As far as the permitting and other part of it, Kathy can certainly talk to that aspect.
I think having the boardwalk option 1C really makes it a much more manageable project. It's a defined project. We have pretty solid cost estimates and we can move forward with that CPA application in the fall, which would be for design and permitting fees, our costs, as well as we'd like to ask for some type of seed money for construction. Lots of these other grant opportunities require to have some type of matching funds, so we'd like to move forward with that. So hopefully if we got approval for that at annual town meeting, it would take a little while, maybe one to two years to design permit and get all the funding together for the main part of it, the Riverwalk Park and the boardwalk, and then probably starting construction after the completion of the Parker's River Bridge, so there's not a lot of stuff going on in that particular area all at one time. The other aspect with regard to the event space, I think we have some minimal improvements that we've made there to make it usable, but I think we can go a little bit further and there might be some tourism revenue preservation funds that we can look at. And that's why we really wanted to do that concept plan for the entire event space and interview a bunch of different promoters and festival event venues in order to find out what's needed. Where's the best place to have the electrical, permanent electrical setup? Where might water need? Where would we want to have the extra parking on-site in addition to how it would blend in with the Riverwalk Park? So that's something that we're kind of hopefully be working on in the next six to eight months so that in the spring, we might be able to do some of those improvements if we can get some funding in order to do that, the tourism revenue preservation funds.
Okay, so are you expecting to ask town meeting for more taxpayer funds?
CPA funding.
CPA funding, okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Possibly tourism preservation funds.
It is taxpayer.
I mean, they're all taxpayer, it's all taxpayer money, you know.
Sorry, I just assumed.
But the funding mechanism would be CPA or tourism preservation. I think, you know, the plus of what we're trying to do is that, you know, we've had this piece of property since 1985 and now we're actually going to be able to start to utilize it. And this event in August will be really the second chance to do that. And what we want to be able to do is get to that point where we can utilize it in a more efficient way while we're still working to develop the park and the boardwalk as a whole. So at least we're getting some utilization out of that site in the meantime, if you will, while we're working on the rest of the project. So that's why we want to get the CPA application so we can get our funding to make the site more usable in the short term.
We have a motion before the board. Any further comments or questions? All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I can make a motion that we approve the charges.
Second. Any further questions? All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good to go.
We're three for three.
Thank you for your, for your work.
Good to go.
Thank you.
You don't have to work on your own new name though, Jim.
I still got seven more minutes I can hang on.
Not to make idle of the naming issue, but I think naming of the location is something we all should be thinking about as well. We want to have a name that is appropriate for either the two sites or one name for the whole site that's going to be attractive and it's going to be productive in terms of getting people out there, so.
One of the things that our feasibility study came back on was the names of River, anything, Riverwalk, this is kind of, you know, everybody's got that name, so maybe something a little more creative might be something we could do and.
I think it, you know, it has to encompass the fact that this is an events area as well and conjure up those images so that people aren't just simply thinking about, oh, well, you just go down and take a walk and, you know, blah, 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 you know, but something more than that, but, you know, that's.
To the general public listening and to yourselves.
That's right.
Let us know what you think.
I like the old drive-in site.
We'll let you make another tough decision.
Got character.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Poconum happenings.
All right.
Poconum happenings.
We're going to move forward with the Cape Cod Energy Park proposal. Ed Centio is here.
This is just informational, this, they're not looking for any vote or anything on this, this is just informational.
I haven't heard of anything specific here.
Give it to the valve course.
Identify some revenue opportunities so we can get a good receipt.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Ed Centio, Finance Director, Town of Yarmouth.
Jeff Colby, DPW Director.
Robie Whitehouse, Waste Management Supervisor and DPW Administrative Supervisor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to lead off to describe the Cape Cod Energy Park project that we've been doing for about four years now. The impetus for the project was that when we did the pro forma for the septic facility after we put $2.5 million in capital improvements into that facility, we were going to start losing money. We were going to lose $370,000 the first year and $350,000 in the subsequent years because of the debt service payments. So we put together a multifunctional team to try to start addressing that particular issue. Worked with Robie Whitehouse to work on how we could save money in terms of energy consumption and we worked with the Cape Light Compact to reduce our energy footprint by about $80,000. Worked with Sean McGinnis to put in some technology infrastructure, put in new software, put them on our phone service network so we could reduce our phone cost. When Jeff came on board, he added some depth from his experience with Chatham. He converted the operations contract that we have a third-party operator that operates the septic facility. He converted that from a, both an expense and a labor contract to a labor-only contract and we got the septic facility on good footing. We also worked with CDM Smith to increase the amount of flow we could take in that septic facility so we could increase our revenues. So we looked at every individual line item or expense line item and revenue line item within the Cape Cod Energy Park or within the septic facility. One item that causes problems was the bio-solids disposal. Those are the solids that are left over after all the septic treatment and we were hauling those bio-solids to upstate Maine. Now we're sending them to upstate New York and their prices kept on rising. So part of this process was to try to take or try to get that under control. So we looked at different solutions for bio-solids, for grease. We looked at, and the reason why we called it Cape Cod Energy Park, we looked at solar, we looked at, you know, battery storage based on bringing in folks like SEVAC and Cape Light Compact into the process. So that's why we're calling it Cape Cod Energy Park, but we're going to talk about the anaerobic digester initiative that we brought before you.
Sure. So Ed's right. We talked a lot about, he talked a lot about the facility itself and this diagram shows an image that might look familiar to you. It's the Exit 8 Cloverleaf off Route 6 leading to Station Ave. The buildings that are in the photo are of the wastewater treatment facility, the commercial transfer station and the wastewater affluent storage tank. The town-owned property was selected for the Cape Cod Energy Park for its ease of access, location in the center of Cape Cod, close proximity to the highway, railroad, as well as its proximity to the highest electricity consumer, which is the wastewater treatment plant that's owned by the town of Yarmouth. So in the next image, you see a little more clearly defined the area that we're describing. Listed are parcels A, B, and C. They're identified as the Cape Cod Energy Park in the RFP that Ed referenced as possible long-term lease opportunities. Each parcel is about an acre and it has its own advantages. The traffic pattern is not clear from the image, but vehicles turn off Station Ave onto Workshop Road, then shortly after pass through the facility's gate, and the road changes from two lanes to one. This creates a smooth traffic pattern. Parcel C is on the left as one travels down the roadway. The structures on the parcel was used as a compost facility when the facility was first built. It is no longer being used. The next building that is not lettered is the wastewater treatment plant. So you can see in the center that Jeff is pointing out, that's the wastewater treatment plant. And as you travel down the road, you have the option of either going straight over the railroad tracks, which will take you directly to the residential disposal area, or taking a sharp left back up towards parcel A. That roadway is still one-way and parcel A would be on your right and it backs up to the railroad tracks that Jeff is highlighting. The next building, and again, you can see that that's a little over an acre, the next building in the center of A and B is the commercial transfer station. The next parcel is B and as you are exiting past parcel B, it will be on your right. And as you can see, parcel C is now on your left. And this is all a one-way road and the traffic pattern has worked really well at this facility. So slide number four, please. So the Cape Cod Energy Park goals included addressing increasing costs of bio-solids and food waste disposal that Ed referenced earlier. An example of a proposed solution to our, and a goal, was to find a solution to our increased cost in sludge disposal. As Ed referenced, we've been transporting and disposing of sludge and paying up to $114.66 per ton. And that compares to a proposed price of $86 through the process. And Ed's going to talk about that a little bit further on. Other solutions or goals for this facility were to divert food waste from landfills and incinerators and the anaerobic digester would potentially allow for that to happen, generating renewable energy and assisting with putting Cape Cod in the forefront of waste management and renewable energy solutions. And last but not least, to create blue water, well, water-related jobs and green jobs, which also restore environmental quality here in the town of Yarmouth.
What is an anaerobic digester? An anaerobic digester is a vessel which is airless, where you mix the bio-solids and the food waste. It generates methane. That methane is then used for either heating buildings, for fueling vehicles and/or running generators to generate electricity. And that, this technology's been around for centuries. Used to be used to heat the baths of some of the folks, you know, centuries ago utilizing, you know, decaying material to actually, or to generate the methane to actually heat the baths. Again, as we indicated, the septic facility was set to lose money. The Yarmouth team re-engineered all of those aspects of the septic facility so that we are actually generating revenue that a couple of towns that decommissioned their plants spent about $3 million to decommission their plant. So we want to make sure that we have a reserve fund in case we need to do that in the future if we don't have a solution like this. And we also need to be able to not go out to bond for the capital improvements, but we can actually generate the revenue that we need to actually do the capital improvements ourselves. So that was the impetus to really try to focus this facility on making money as opposed to being a burden on the taxpayer. So that was the impetus to really try to focus this facility on making money as opposed to being a burden on the taxpayer. So again, in the short run, we had no solutions for bio-solids. In doing the research, we found that an anaerobic digester could be one of those solutions. And we started the campaign of meeting with a lot of different partners rather than putting this on the burden of the taxpayers. We wanted to see if we could do a public-private partnership as it related to this particular facility. One of the processes we did was, you know, we didn't have the expertise in-house to do all this stuff. So we reached out to the Barnstable County Extension and we did some food waste modeling across Cape Cod to determine how much food waste we could divert to this particular solution. We looked at how we would actually, in fact, divert the food waste. We looked to what they're doing in Europe to actually divert food waste because they're way ahead of us in terms of some of these initiatives. And the finance staff, Tara Monroe, Dave Allen, and I worked on getting $500,000 in grant money. We used some of that money to do the RFP. And we're going to be using hopefully the rest of that money to do some things that will help both the septic facility and our partner to be successful in this endeavor. And then, as Robie indicated, we released the RFP. Our approach was a public-private partnership rather than taking on $15 to $20 million in debt for the town of Yarmouth. We received four qualified proposals. We narrowed it down to two different finalists. We interviewed the finalists and we ended up choosing Genesis Industries for the next no-obligation step. So the next step is a nine-month period where they're going to try to lock up contracts to secure food waste, to secure bio-solids, work out agreements with the town of Yarmouth, including the board, so that we can have a favorable situation. There are several regional and state partners. I just want to mention a few. The Mass Clean Energy Center, who awarded us a $100,000 grant. The Mass DEP Sustainable Recovery Program, who awarded a $400,000 grant. The Cape Cod Commission has been a partner in this from the very beginning. Barnstable County, Cape Light Compact, Cape and Vineyard Electric. When we put in the applications for the grants, Senator Seer received presentations and signed off, and so did Representative Will. And I apologize for, you know, some of the other people that I may have missed, but there were a lot of people that participated in this process. Also, we brought some folks in to go through the permitting process. So we had people from our building department, fire department, from community development. They've all been an integral part of this process. And we've also given similar presentations to the finance committee and the planning board, who are also very enthusiastic about this particular project. Excuse me. So the first phase is, as Robie indicated, in the RFP that was given, gives us immediate benefits. We're going to save between $40,000 and $50,000 a year to start with in our bio-solids disposal. By utilizing Genesis, they're taking the bio-solids, taking it to another anaerobic digester that they currently operate. And that has decreased the cost quite a bit to us. If we can have something on-site, that'll decrease the cost even further. And as I indicated, there's a nine-month confirmation period. That's so they can do the design engineering permitting, contract with different towns, cities to get the bio-solids, and to get an off-taker for the methane and/or the electricity that they'll be producing. So if Genesis decides to move forward because the economics work for them, then they'll go through the permitting process, do the public outreach. We've already given them contact names for people in the community, including on butters lists, the energy contacts, the different boards and committees that they would be working with. Obviously, the selectmen will be included in the contract terms process. We'll sign a contract and hopefully begin construction. And just as a wrap-up, we have an area that's zoned for this particular purpose. The technology is proven technology. It's centuries old. We want to convert waste to renewable energy and hopefully we can create some jobs as part of this process as well. And any questions?
Board members?
Oh, I think it sounds awesome. Good luck. Thank you very much for all the hard work. I hope it works out. It sounds really fascinating.
It's still a long shot. You know, we don't, as you saw, the parcels are split up a bit. So we don't have the ideal location or ideal landset. But the folks that we've been working with, and we've been talking with them for two to three years, they're willing to, you know, put the engineering effort in to make that work. We have now some competition. Couple of towns have seen our RFP and we've incentivized some folks, our cities, to actually look at this process. But again, it's still a win-win because what we're looking for is a long-term solution for our bio-solids disposal. And this is not just about the septic facility. This is about all the facilities that we currently have on Cape Cod. And this is about the new facilities that we might develop. One of the things that wasn't a part of the 208 plan was, okay, now how do we dispose of these bio-solids? So this would be one of the components. One of the things Jeff also did when he came onboard was, the town of Borne tried to do this project and we were 100% behind them. We initiated a regional RFP to bring onboard all the wastewater treatment facilities on Cape Cod so that we could actually provide the feedstock to the town of Borne. And Jeff got through that regional procurement. We're utilizing that regional procurement and so are others. But, you know, they ran into some hurdles that we've overcome because they didn't have somebody that could dispose of the waste or treat the waste. They didn't have a large energy user on-site and some other issues. So I think we're in a better position than they were, but there is some competition. But if we can take these bio-solids to somebody in southeastern Massachusetts as opposed to another state, then we're better off, no matter how this goes.
And just to emphasize something that Ed said earlier, we're already in a better situation. We're going to see a $30,000 savings just by partnering with Genesis on current sludge disposal in this current year. So we're already in a better position, even if the bigger project is still a long shot, as you mentioned.
Will that happen regardless?
Yes.
It's already started. That was part of the July. It's probably about $30,000 to $40,000. But, you know, hopefully that will decrease, no matter whether we have a facility in Yarmouth or we have a facility that's close by Yarmouth.
One last question. What's in it for Genesis?
They are looking at a 10% to 12% return on their investment and that's kind of their criteria.
What are they making? I mean, what's their?
So they're generating, they're creating energy. So they're selling.
In the form of methane?
In the form of methane or electricity. And they're also, part of the process is to develop Class AEQ fertilizer, which is fertilizer that you can sell and apply anywhere as part of this project. So it's about producing a product that they can sell. And they already have an anaerobic digester and they have multiple others that are underway. And this is, again, something that's done throughout Europe, but is just now, and it's been done, you know, for decades in the United States, but it's becoming more prevalent as landfill space is disappearing, particularly in, you know, places like the Northeast. So, and incinerators are also, where incinerators actually also dispose of the sludge, those are disappearing. So this is the next, this is the green technology that handles the food waste and the bio-solids.
Sounds like a great program. I'm glad we learned what an anaerobic digester is.
Yes, yes. My Googling for four years ago.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I just have a couple of questions. I think it's a fabulous thing to explore. I just think that turning something that we pay to dispose of into something that we can use is amazing. I'm concerned though about the environmental, the possible environmental impacts with methane and fertilizer. And you hear those words and groundwater. And I just want to make sure that however we move forward, we're really careful about planning. I know it's been done before, but that's concerning.
Yeah, and obviously they'll go through a lengthy permitting process. One of the things, just to make a note of, food going into landfills, the methane is not captured.
Right.
So this is done in an environment that actually captures the methane. So this is more environmentally sensitive or friendly than is, you know, the current method that we're disposing of these types of things. And incinerators with the exhaust gases that come out of incinerators, those are also issues. So that's why this is so prevalent, you know, throughout Europe and other parts of the world.
My only question really is, what is it that you're looking from us at this point in time?
We just.
Information?
Just giving you an informational.
Excited to watch it move forward and I'm hopeful that Genesis is successful. And I think it's something that all of us would benefit from.
And we have a lot of support that we have to give them, you know, a lot of information that they're requiring. So we're all plugging along in terms of those types of things.
And I echo.
Those are our nights and weekend projects.
And I appreciate that and all the work that you've put into it.
Yeah, a lot of people.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I too want to add my congratulations and kudos. I know this has been in the works for a while. It's amazing what you've been able to get to, what you've been able to achieve. This is terrific. The, I also appreciate Chairman us getting an update on projects like this. We know they're percolating. We get reports, but I think for everyone's benefit, sometimes it's helpful from time to time to show folks at home and people in the community some of the exciting work that's going on by our town staff and department heads. This is a kind of initiative people have heard a little bit about, they've read about, but I think it's important to keep this forefront in people's minds. And as you've mentioned before, it's also part of the big picture. When we look at addressing some of the bigger picture issues on Cape Cod, Yarmouth is once again playing a role in helping address a very serious issue here on Cape Cod. So I think that's helpful. Jobs, we mentioned jobs here. Is this, how many jobs do we think over time might come out of this?
We're talking about, you know, at a bare minimum, we're talking about four to five. But I'm also looking at, when we discuss this with everybody, is there some research opportunities? Where people actually research how this process is being done? The fact that we're the only golf course in Massachusetts that is allowed to spray irrigate because we use ultra-fila treatment and we use ozone treatment to treat our water. Is there some way to actually have a curriculum with Bridgewater State or with the Cape Cod Community College or promote that?
I wouldn't suggest adding to your list UMass Dartmouth.
Yes.
I mean, they have such a robust marine science program. They're working in so many other Cape towns. I think they're looking to establish a strong presence. I think you might find, again, I've mentioned this in other settings in town, but I think for what you're doing here, I think you might find some interesting or potential partnership there as well. So I just put that out there. If you were to scale it up, Ed, job-wise, what could it go to? What do you think?
Don't want to, can't spec.
All right, you don't want to be put on.
I'm a finance director. I don't spec really too much.
No, I have my economic development hat. I'm always thinking, okay, what's the upside?
But we're looking at what we can do for spinoffs and, you know, how we can.
No, I think that's terrific. I really do. The, oh, I had one other question that just popped out of my head. I think, I'll just stop right there. Oh, the question was, when you get to the decision of contracting, where are we on your schedule to see this perhaps come back to the board for having to make, sign off on a contract? When do we see that coming back?
They're looking at a nine-month process.
So nine months from now, it may very well be at a point where there's a decision. How long would that contract be?
Twenty years.
Be at so.
Twenty to 30 years.
Got it.
And that's what we, at town meeting, passed the ability to lease that loan.
Okay, that's great. Now, is it true that DEP is putting increasing pressure on food waste generators to find places like this to dispose of their waste?
They passed a law that if you're a food waste generator over a certain amount, that you can no longer send that waste to landfills. That you have to handle that in a different way. They haven't, there are no outlets like what we're proposing, so I don't think they've enforced it. Once there are outlets to actually take that food waste, and I think somebody sent us, from the Energy Committee, that Whole Foods has a container in their, behind their building that they're actually taking to an anaerobic digester. So I think some of the more socially, and Stop &amp; Shop has an off-Cape anaerobic digester in Fremont? Freetown, sorry, where they're taking their food waste. So I think, once you have an ability to put it somewhere, then I think they'll enforce it.
Yeah, so the regulatory framework is in place essentially to sustain flow once this investment's been made.
That's correct.
Yeah, and we've seen this in the past on solid waste. The state has been managed other solid waste issues when the capacity's there, when the resources are there to adjust and create transfer stations. And then the enforcement orders kick in and they're much more aggressive on that side.
That's a good point. The state is updating their solid waste master plan and they certainly want to include increased awareness of the food waste and the organics diversion issues. And certainly, like Ed said, will provide an outlet.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one more thing. The Cape Cod Composting Network has been in place now since 2014. And that's been the municipalities as well as private entities here on Cape Cod that have been meeting, that were meeting in 2014 and 15 and into 2016, talking about restaurants and institutions that meet that criteria that the DEP set forward of a ton a week and making sure that there is a location to send the food products. And actually, some of the farms here on Cape Cod have been accepting those food processes from those different entities. As a matter of fact, many of the municipalities here on Cape Cod are actually doing food diversion already. And some of those composting farms and facilities are taking that food waste already. They're picking it up and there's some systems already in place.
Great. My last question. You see this at least as a revenue-neutral, but also is there potentially a revenue, is there financial gain over time?
When I look at expense reductions, I consider that to be the same as revenues.
Got it.
So I think this is going to be positive.
So what you see essentially for overtime as we find, as we deal with the whole solid waste challenge and managing our solid waste, because clearly there are issues down the road there, you see this as one way for us to sort of get ahead of the game?
Well, the lease revenue and then some of the other incentives that we have in place should allow for generating revenue. And that's part of revenue discussion that I think you're going to, the board's going to have later on. And this would be one of the potential pieces as it relates to that revenue discussion.
Okay, thanks again.
Ed, you and Jeff both kind of referred to this project as a long shot going forward. Is that because of the configuration of the buildings or are there any other factors that would go into that?
I've been saying this is a long shot for four years. It got a little less of a long shot when we actually got people to respond to our RFP. We had 34 people attend the pre-RFP meeting and we had, you know, robust participation going back and forth and had some good proposals. So that long shot is decreasing now that we have some other competition in the area or, you know.
Potentially.
It's a distance away. It's off-Cape. But again, you know, until I actually have a signed contract, I consider it a long shot. But, you know, the partners are, you know, they're going gangbusters. They really want to make this work. You know, we brought up a lot of the things that could go wrong and a lot of the other communities that might want to participate. And what they said was, well, Yarmouth did the work. Yarmouth wants this and Yarmouth has a facility. So we want to, you know, try to make this work in Yarmouth. And so they see the opportunity here.
What would be the regional draw of the waste that they would be treating at this facility with the Genesis proposal?
Like ours, lowering the cost. You know, it's going to be about, and Jeff had some discussions with another community or other communities recently. And they want to talk because they're paying a lot of money to dispose of their bio-solids.
And one example of that is Barnstable. They're actually spending over half a million dollars in bio-solids disposal. And this is a huge savings for them. They have the same challenges with regards to disposal of that that we do on a larger scale.
So you think there'd be broad-based regional support of this project once it got going?
And there already has been, as I indicated. We did a regional RFP to help support the Borne project by trying to consolidate all of the bio-solids within or on the Cape. And there was great participation from all of the communities to have wastewater treatment. So I think everybody is aware that this is going to. So I think everybody is aware that this is going to be a major cost driver going forward.
There'd be no other facility like this on the Cape?
There would not be. It wouldn't support more than one.
And that's kind of why I referenced a longer shot previously because we're really a lot of small communities and an anaerobic digester really is something that needs feedstock to support that. And so we really need to aggregate those feedstocks just to make it viable. So that's kind of what the process that we're in right now and it's really a lot of smaller flows getting together to make it viable.
So you wouldn't probably anticipate any off-Cape load coming down?
There might be in the short run.
The bridge, maybe Wareham?
Yeah, we've talked to Wareham about, you know, several different partnerships. Yeah, I think there may be something like that. But what the plan is, is that they need to do some things in the short run. But then as the food waste gets diverted, there's more than enough food waste on Cape Cod to support the digester. And then, you know, that would no longer, any food waste that might come here might not be needed in the long run.
Thank you. Okay. Well, congratulations on what you've done so far. It's a great update and it's, you know, dynamic and creative proposal and good luck for the next nine months. We'll look forward to future updates.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, let's see, who is going to be coming before us?
Jeff.
Okay.
Jeff.
Back again.
Leaving.
Does he have one? Does he have one now, first president?
Yes. Yes, good evening. Jeff Colby, DPW Director again. This topic is the Bayview Street Agreement. This is a project that's been in the works for four or five years. It predates even my time here in Yarmouth. It's something that's been working its way through the process. It's primarily a maintenance project with regard to Bayview Street. Bayview is a significant access to the hospital, especially with some of the reconfigurations for ambulances and emergency vehicles. And so it's important that we keep that pavement condition in a better condition than it is today. Certainly, looking at all of our road condition indexes, and we refer to that as a pavement condition index, this ranks pretty low, Bayview Street does. The complication on this particular maintenance project compared to many of the others that we do in town is that we share this with Barnstable. The road is, as referenced in the agreement, is bifurcated by the town line. It's not an easy split. It's about a 45-degree angle through a good portion of the road. It's right down the middle in some areas.
Excuse me one second, Jeff. A point of clarification, Chairman. Is there a site plan along with this presentation? I don't see anything in my packet.
There is not.
There's not? So you're going to just describe the improvements we're talking about?
Absolutely. Even in the agreement, it's just referenced as a locust plan for the road. The site plan is still being developed, the plan for the work, I should say, is still being developed. But that roadway is one, again, that's shared by the town of Barnstable and Yarmouth. The majority of that road is within the town of Yarmouth. So at the point in the process where we're meeting on a fairly regular basis with our counterparts over at Barnstable, DPW, and the town engineer over there in project development, the question arose of who's going to take the lead with regard to procurement? Where it's not reasonable to procure it separately. There would be a very difficult project limit discussion that would be have and it's not something you could easily split out the costs for. So given that a majority of the project is in Yarmouth, it made sense for Yarmouth to take the administrative lead in this project. So for this particular project, that's essentially what the agreement is that you have before you in your packet. It's an administrative agreement with the town of Barnstable that we will take the lead in procurement. Of course, they will pay for the portion of the project that is in Barnstable. We'll pay for the portion that is in Yarmouth. But someone needs to take the lead for advertising, for procurement, for the contractor interactions related to administrative functions like certified payrolls, that type of thing. Coming to one central location makes a lot of sense for this project. Project team meetings will still include representatives from Barnstable and representatives from Yarmouth, but they need someone to take the lead in that regard. And again, the majority of the project is in Yarmouth. So our plan for this is to use Chapter 90 funds. Again, it's a maintenance project. This is not a project where there is a major reconstruction. It's not a major intersection project. It's not a, you know, major bridge replacement. We have all those types of projects in the various stages of planning here in Yarmouth. But this one is essentially a maintenance project. It's a road resurfacing project. In fact, if it was entirely in Yarmouth, it would be much easier. It might actually be a little further along. It might even be completed at this point because we're not working closely with a partner that we need to make these types of agreements with. There is some minor drainage improvements and there is some sidewalk reconstruction. There's already an existing sidewalk along that roadway that, you know, leads to the hospital. That sidewalk needs to be reconstructed. But beyond that, it's generally what we would refer to as a maintenance project. In Yarmouth, we have road maintenance dollars. We have Chapter 90 dollars. And for the most part, those are what we use those funds for. If this were a bigger project, we were adding a lane or a major intersection project, we would be looking to have this on the tip, the regional transportation improvement project. And we have a number of projects, whether it's a new bike trail or other projects that we're looking at that would be on a transportation improvement on a much larger scale. This one is essentially a maintenance project and as such, we're looking to use our Chapter 90 funds to support that. With that said, I'm happy to walk through the agreement if the board would like to. Most of it is fairly generic relative to indemnifying different parties as part of the agreement. A lot of standard language, giving the town administrator and town managers, respectively, in Yarmouth and Barnstable, abilities to make decisions on change orders and things of that nature. So it is administrative, primarily administrative in nature, but I'm happy to walk through that if that's what the board would like to do.
I have a question.
Sure.
My first question is if the town of Yarmouth is managing the project, I don't see anywhere in here where the town of Yarmouth will be paid for its oversight. I know we just entered into agreement with them for weights and measures where the costs to them and anything was, I know it was a savings to us according to you, but it was still put into the agreement that it would be charged back to us. So in terms of your time, the management time of doing the certified payrolls, managing the contract, is there any way that the town of Yarmouth will be reimbursed by the town of Barnstable for that service?
We haven't been planning that at this time. Again, this is mostly on the administrative end as far as construction, inspection, oversight. That's the real time-consuming piece of any of these types of projects. That is going to be a shared cost between the two communities. That is something we'll likely have our consultant, which is VHB in this case, oversee and split the cost out based upon the portion of the project that they're overseeing, whether it's in Barnstable or Yarmouth.
Well, the percentage of the cost that is to Barnstable, I think that there should be an overhead or a management. I do agree there needs to be a point person, but, you know, they're benefiting from us managing basically the project.
From an administrative standpoint, I would say that all decisions relative to the project are going to be made by a project team that will consist of elements of Barnstable and Yarmouth. But there is some administrative work that Yarmouth will be doing. We can certainly look at what that cost might be if that's something that the board would like us to take a look at. At this point, in the grand scheme of a project of this nature, it's a relatively small amount of time. I would say that as far as dedicated to just the administrative component, to be myself and the DPW Administrative Assistant, and we're probably looking at something that would be on the order of 10 to 20 hours of time. So it's relatively small in a project of this magnitude.
Has this been reviewed by Town Council?
It has.
There is somewhat of an offsetting provision in there though, and that is that if Barnstable wants a kind of an accounting or audit of the monies, that they'll have to pay the cost of that entirely.
Right, that's a-
That's a burden, you know, on the financial accounting part that's going to fall squarely on them. It doesn't eliminate Tracy's concern, but it's just something that provision favors Yarmouth and could be, depending on how extensive the audit is, could be a substantial expense to Barnstable.
Certainly. I think that the reason that's in there, it's not something that we would expect as a matter of course. I think that we're expecting that this goes relatively smoothly. If this was a project that was entirely within Yarmouth, we'd have the same type of administrative costs and overhead. So the thought is that we're just working closely with Barnstable on this. I will tell you that on another matter, we are going, relative to a different division within DPW, we're going to be benefiting very significantly financially and that's an agreement that's going to come before you in the next couple of weeks. But that's a completely different matter. But I can tell you that while maybe in this particular case, we're spending a little bit of time and in another particular case, we'll be gaining significant financial benefit from these partnership opportunities. I see it a little bit as a give and take with them on different agreements, so.
The other thing I'd like you to double-check with Town Council on is paragraph seven where it says the venue in the event of a dispute would be the District Court of Barnstable. Generally speaking, the District Court's jurisdiction on cases of monetary damages is limited $25,000, so that probably should say the Barnstable Superior Court. Additionally, the District Court doesn't have what they call equitable powers. If you are trying to restrain them from doing something or you are trying to compel them to do something, the District Court doesn't have jurisdiction over those kinds of things. So I would ask Town Council if he doesn't think it would be a better idea for that to say the Barnstable Superior Court.
Okay, I will check with him.
I have one other question in terms of liability. Is the liability the same based on the contract? Does that mean we assume the full liability? Are we, we bond the job, we make sure the, if somebody gets hurt in Barnstable, for instance, how does that, how does that work for us?
Well, we make sure for this particular project, one of the administrative functions will make sure all the bonding and insurance for the contractor is in place. And so that will be something that we'll cover, we'll make sure is in line before we award the contract. And that's generally where that liability piece would be or where the responsibility would be, would be on the contractor. So that's not just protecting us when an employee of the contractor might be hurt, if you will, but even when there's an issue relative to the public use of that roadway, which will occur ongoing throughout the project, that liability is, falls on the contractor and we just make sure the documentation is in line ahead of time so that that's supported.
Jeff, just a quick question. If you broke down the cost, it's estimated at 1.5 million. How do you think that's likely to be split? I know from what I read from here, you're, we pay for what's in Yarmouth, they pay for what's in Barnstable. Is that?
Interestingly enough, I think the numbers are probably pretty close to 60, 40.
Really?
I know that was another number that came up earlier in the meeting, but-
Yeah.
But that's pretty close to, you know, what those numbers look like, given the current project limits.
But is that how, that's how they're going to define it though? It's based on what's in Yarmouth and what's in-
Exactly right. So the engineer will do a square foot calculation based upon what portion of the project is in Yarmouth versus what portion is in Barnstable, absolutely.
Not based on school enrollment?
Absolutely not.
Okay, that's good.
I'm sure this is not a Dennis project, right?
It is not with the town of Dennis, no.
That's great. No, I'm very fine with this. I think this is great. I like the kind of collaboration that's going on with Barnstable. They've got a great DPW. They've got a really good team over there. The more we're doing stuff together, I think is, I think it's fantastic. So congratulations on trying to build and strengthen those relationships.
Is this commencement date accurate, that it's expected to start by September 4th?
Comfortable to say it won't start by September 4th. At this point, we are hoping to get it started this fall. But probably more importantly is the completion date. If it doesn't happen this fall, it's a relatively short-duration project. It can get done completely in the spring if it needs to be. The goal was to try to-
Have you gotten the bid yet?
We have not. It's not been bid out. We have to have this in place before we could do that process.
Jeff, I don't know how often we get into these kinds of inter-technical agreements. I don't remember any having to do with just shared facilities with other towns. You know, and it's nice to be a good neighbor, but, you know, we are assuming some costs involved here. In addition to the supervision, we're providing sets of documents to Barnstable, making copies of invoices and those kinds of things. So there's some administrative cost involved. And I need, I think there needs to be some sort of recognition of that. And, you know, to, you know, there's, if you look at most projects, the contractor or the general contractor fee is usually fairly substantial. You know, 10% is not, is fairly common or more. And there's usually, I mean, you look in any contract and there's so many contingencies and so forth. But I know that doesn't probably exist in this case, but, you know, I think the management part of it should not be overlooked and I think that's something the board is sensitive to.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think Jeff had mentioned that there's another project coming down the road in which the lion's share of the administrative work is going to be carried by Barnstable. Is that, am I misrepresenting what you're?
Not another road project.
But another public works project.
Public works project, yes.
And so the burden will be largely shared, shifted mostly on their side.
Right, in that particular case. So like I said, this is kind of a give and take. There is an administrative burden, although it's relatively small in this case, that we'll take on. But if there's, and when there is another project relative to Barnstable, that burden will shift to them and that's projects that are likely to be much more in magnitude, more significant dollar-wise than this particular project. As you had asked, there's, as far as a road project go, very few opportunities for this. If we were looking to do a bridge project, let's say High Bank Road Bridge needed to be replaced, we'd need to do some kind of partnership along these lines with Dennis in that particular case. So there are some shared assets that we have, but they're very few and far between. In fact, in this particular case, if we could come up with a clear project limit, let's say at House Number 20, that's, we draw a line in the sand, if you will, we could really separate these as two separate projects. They could take care of their portion. We would simply match up in a, you know, linear fashion to their portion. But given that where the town line is in this particular case, that's nearly impossible.
Okay, all right.
But that's percentage. I mean, you don't have that information as you go forward in terms of the overall cost, the percentage. I just, I'm fine as far as what you're saying. I didn't know that information upfront about what's coming down the pipe. But of course, we could get to that agreement and the people of Barnstable could want the percentage to manage it. And then we're left without the opportunity to go back and renegotiate this. So that's where I get concerned, you know. I think it's fair, I'm not saying to ask for a lot, but certainly perhaps we could cover our costs at some point if we could be able to quantify that. I think it's fair to say we should cover our costs in regards to what's upcoming. But again, it's hard because we don't have the other agreement that you're talking about and how do we know that that's going to pan out? It's a small amount of money, but 40%, you know, is about $800,000 and, you know, even a small percentage of that to manage the project, I think, is fair.
We certainly could look at that. If it's just, you know, worth mentioning, there's no additional administrative burden to this project as if it were a standalone project. If we were doing this completely in Yarmouth, we'd have the same level of administrative effort with regard to procurement, advertising, you know, the opening of the bids, getting all the, you know, insurance documentation together, certified payrolls. If this were strictly a Yarmouth project, we'd have the same level of effort. In this particular case, we're just partnering with another community.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve the agreement as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, opposed? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you. Does this, oh, this is going to be signed by Dan, right?
It will be signed by Dan, correct.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Vineyard Wind update.
So just two items here for the board. The first is an update. So since our public hearing last week, Vineyard Wind and Eric Stevens and Nate Mayo have reached out and have begun discussions and expressed interest in having conversations about developing an initial MOU to help mitigate costs to the town of Yarmouth for engaging legal fees as was discussed at the last meeting. So promising conversation and so I think the direction, it'd be nice to get direction from the board this evening.
And so I think the direction, it'd be nice to get direction from the board this evening for, for Dan and the team to be able to have those conversations on drafting an MOU that we could present to the board that helps offset those costs of moving forward for the town. And then the second piece is the Save Our Sound legislation letter here, if the board wishes to support that. This asks our congressional delegation to essentially put, file legislation to put protections in place for Nantucket Sound.
What are, what are the implications of the letter?
If I could add, if I could speak to this.
What are you going to address?
Mr. Chairman, let me just speak to this for just a second. The area within Nantucket Sound is federal waters, and so what they're asking for is the congressional delegation to support some legislative measure to offer greater protection to the, to the sound. They've, they've discussed in the past the idea of maybe a sanctuary or some type of designation that keeps off limits wind farms in the middle of Nantucket Sound. So that's more or less what they're looking for. What we're being asked for is, because other towns have signed on to this. I know the Nantucket Board of Selectmen about a week or two ago, they voted unanimously to endorse this letter. I asked that we pull it from the packet so the board, so the board could have the opportunity, if it would like, to endorse this as a board, in addition to just authorizing the, the town administrator to sign it, so.
I guess I'm, I'm just concerned about unintended consequences. I, you know, the, how far the legislation would go in terms of protection, quote unquote, that in fact interferes with commercial activity, then...
If I can speak to that?
Yeah.
The type of designation they're looking for is what is called a national historic landmark. Now, several years ago, the National Park Service designated Nantucket Sound as being eligible for a national cultural historic preservation designation. So what they would essentially do is commemorate that. That would be the, the focus of it. So any activity that would cause harm to the cultural attributes, aesthetic attributes of the sound would be restricted in some way, but in terms of the federal government authorizing that activity. That's sort of the intention of an historic landmark. It wouldn't impact fishing, it wouldn't impact other recreational uses of Nantucket Sound. It's a fairly broad designation that you would give, for example, if you were to designate a home as a historic landmark, so.
Was the sound a DCPC? Did they create a district?
No. No, there had, but there have been, there are areas within Nantucket Sound that I think for a period of time were designated something to that, but those I think were state waters. It is, there is a state-designated ocean sanctuary that surrounds Nantucket Sound. But this area in the middle was carved out years ago when there was a dispute between the Commonwealth and the federal government over who had jurisdiction over the, the middle of Nantucket Sound. So all they're looking for is affording protection that previously existed when it was all considered an ocean sanctuary.
Getting back to the MOU or MOA, is the intent there is to have Dan and yourself work with the Vineyard Wind on a, moving forward on a potential reimbursement to the town for legal services and any other incremental costs that we would incur? Is that correct?
That's correct. As we assess the project and have discussions related to a host community agreement.
So it's really a fairly limited step forward without any binding, will it have any, any specific dollar amounts mentioned, or?
That's the intent, but anything that's discussed will be presented to the board for your approval.
That'll come back to us for approval.
Correct.
Okay. Other questions perhaps at this point?
If you want me to say something, but he wanted to talk.
Oh, sure. Yeah, that would be fine.
Nate Mayo with Vineyard Wind, the last time I spoke to you, I went a bit fast. It was several months ago. So things have slowed down since then. This, this idea came out of the meeting from, of last week, which you officiated and was, I think, very helpful. And the realization coming forward that, that this chicken and egg issue, that the town faces administrative costs and even beginning to evaluate a project of this magnitude. So we'd like to engage that discussion, that the town shouldn't be on the hook for any costs, you know, in the, in the initial analysis here. And we hope that'll grow forward with the town feeling, you know, protected and understood as a partner in this project. So, you know, we look forward to hashing out the details and bringing back something to the board that is palatable for all those involved opponents and supporters alike. I'd also like to add, regarding the Alliance to Protect Nantucket Sound legislation, we've been in a lot of discussions with the Alliance regarding that legislation and do support it in, in spirit and have, and have, appear that we have aligned interests in terms of the protections in Nantucket Sound. We know that being part of that battle, you know, the decades-long, or decade-plus-long battle with Cape Wind, we can't allow the door to be open at any juncture. And while we think there are some sort of institutional protections and some political and spiritual protections of the sound from future development, we think, you know, from a policy standpoint, we can support something that, that enshrines that and ensures that under no circumstances will there be wind turbines in the sound.
Okay, great. Thank you, Nate. Okay. Any other questions or thoughts at this point?
I think that that was one of the things that we asked for. I think I'm very comfortable, you know...
As a first step.
As far as a first step. I mean, obviously, I'm not going to commit to anything until I read the memorandum to see what the details are in, but in, in terms of making sure the taxpayers aren't bearing the costs for us to get our answers, I think that it's a good first step. So I appreciate their commitment there, and I look forward to the, to the actual reviewing of the document.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, yeah, I would agree with, with Tracy. I think the devil's in the details. I think we're anxious to see, you know, the kind of financial commitment and the ability, you know, that, the real help in terms of answering some of our questions. I know Secretary Beaton was here in Yarmouth. I suggested to the, to the town administrator that the secretary also be approached to step up and potentially help as it relates to, you know, help us with respect to understanding a lot of the state issues. And as, as some of you maybe recall, when we sent a letter to the Environmental Affairs Office, when the MEPA process began, there were a number of things that we asked them to study and look at, but they turned us down. So those are things that I think are still valid and worth exploring, whether or not we can get more help. In that sense, is, is debatable. Obviously Vineyard Wind has spoken to that. But I do think, what I'm concerned about are staff costs, all right? Yes, there are legal questions, but staff costs, there's an enormous amount of information. People are asking some very tough questions. I think the extent to which our staff, people here in town, can be adequately supported, whether it's with our own consultants to help assess and discern and through some of the information. Because what happens is you have, you know, a well-financed development team with well-financed consultants doing fairly sophisticated analysis. And to some degree on, to the extent that there are people raising questions, there's a need for a sort of a robust effort on our part, because I think here in Yarmouth, you've heard the questions, Nate. You know what, you've heard them loud and clear. And I think people are going to continually demand that, at least from the town of Yarmouth, that we can assess for ourselves if we're getting the answers to the questions. To some degree, we understand them and make, because we've raised questions, we want to make sure that, whether it's in a supplemental EIS, I mean, I'd like the ability to ask our team, for example, here in Yarmouth, whether or not in the new supplemental EIS that's being done, whether or not some of the questions that we've raised there, that we've brought up, or that we agree with, like with the Division of Marine Fisheries, whether any of these concerns are adequately addressed to our town's satisfaction. And that, that costs money, that costs time. And I think we need, we need help with that.
Mike?
I'll defer to the chair on, I think he wants to respond, but he's got to do that through you.
Sure, that'd be fine.
So the first stage, I think, was to kind of get the ball rolling. The town staff has been, has worked, worked with us and been, been available at your direction, and we appreciate that. I think to get to the, the first question is, you know, whether it's a legal cost, an administrative cost, even a consulting cost, whatever it is, something on the short term that has few or no strings attached to offer to the town and say, if there's, you know, figure out on the very short term what, what a need might be. And, and we'll see about, about making sure that, that we can support that, you know, give it to the town, whether it's third party or admin. And, you know, we'll have that discussion. But I think this becomes an iterative process, because of course, as much as we would like to offer, you know, a robust support out the gate for, you know, a wide-scale third-party analysis or something like that, that kind of a cost outlay before having any, you know, tentative understanding of how we might move forward would be like, you know, putting the cart before the horse a bit. So, so this would be something to sort of, you know, give the town that first step, and then a further discussion and maybe future steps before we get to some sort of larger, larger agreement, which I think, you know, the board would say they're not quite ready for at the moment.
Great, thanks again. Mike?
I agree with Mark's comments. The only thing I'd add, and based on what Nate said, the short-term needs, I think that would be identified would be legal costs and probably an environmental consultant and also administrative costs at the local level.
Yeah. You know, just as a follow-up, I talked with each of our board members about a meeting that we had last week. We had Secretary Beaton from the Department of Environmental Protection here and met with our state representatives or staff members from our state representatives and state senators' offices. Chris was at the meeting, as well as Dan Knappick, and talked about the issues and follow-up to the meeting that we had with the public. And I think certainly Secretary Beaton was, I think, impressed with the fact that we engaged the public, that Vineyard Wind had done so, and that there was substantial opportunity offered to do that. And, and we talked about some of the follow-up issues, the cost reimbursement, trying to figure out ways that, what the mitigation cost should be and so forth, and asking for state support on that. And the secretary also talked about potentially having the Department of Environmental Protection come to our community and define their process. And I think that's very important, because, you know, we get a lot, and our select board gets a lot of comments about the need for our town to respond to the variety of challenges and, and questions with regard to the environment in particular, having to do with this proposal. And while we have some, some great knowledgeable people in our, on staff, the magnitude of the filings is very complex. And the Department of Environmental Protection, the state of Massachusetts, is looking at those in detail, responding to Vineyard Wind and, and asking for follow-up where it's appropriate. So we need the state to come to town and, and explain to our residents exactly what is happening at the state level, so that there's some comfort about the environmental review that is going on. And I think that will help our residents understand the level of review and the scrutiny that is, that is involved. And it's, and it's very substantial. So I think I'll offer that at this stage. We also, I think, need to ask that in the discussions, Chris, that, that you and Dan have with Vineyard Wind, that we also talk about potentially having additional meetings with our, our town residents to offer opportunities for further review and questions. And I think the, the format of kind of an update on where things stand, as well as a review, you know, I was getting questions subsequently about even some of the content of the meeting, people not fully understanding the technical aspects of the proposals and not understanding what the relationship is with the state and so forth. So, so I think there's additional work to be done there, and, and I think it's important that we be able to listen to follow-up questions from, from our residents. So I think we need to have that as well as part of the discussion and the MOA, or MOU, MOA, I'm not sure which way it's termed at this stage, so.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, could I just ask for, I, I'd like to move that the board endorses this letter dated May 30th by the Alliance to Protect Nantucket Sound and authorize our town administrator to express similar support to our congressional delegation.
Second.
I have a question about that in terms of a map and locusts, and how far off the coast? What, what exact area does it cover? It's not going to have anything to do with projects on Nantucket Sound, a budding on land?
No. The area is three miles off the coast. The federal waters go beyond, three miles beyond.
Okay, so it's three to 10 miles? Is that where, is that the?
It's, yeah, the waters that are beyond three miles. So there's, if you actually were to look at a map of what we call the donut hole, what's often referred to by people that sail or spend time on Nantucket Sound, it's often referred to as the donut hole. But there's literally, this, it actually looks like a flounder. It's sort of in the middle of Nantucket Sound that defines the three-mile boundary offshore from Nantucket, the vineyard, and the mainland of the Cape.
And is this supporting a new bill, or you said it's reinvigorating an old bill?
This is a proposal that they've had floating around for a little while, and it's an attempt here to reinvigorate that effort.
Do you know the bill number or bill name or?
There is no bill name, there is no bill number. There's nothing that's been filed. The legislature, I think what...
This is new.
Yeah, I think what they're trying to do is get the legislators to be a bit more engaged in this. When Cape Wind was actually going through the permitting process, with the exception of a couple of legislators, most of the federal legislators stayed away from this issue. Senator Kennedy, Congressman Delahunt, were very active proponents of protecting the sound. But beyond that, you couldn't get anybody else in the congressional delegation to support it. I think there's some hope now that Cape Wind has sort of gone, you know, gone into the sunset, that now might be an appropriate time to get this kind of protection.
But it's not going to have any impact on any type of fishing or sporting?
No, no. I would say this is kind of a minimalist approach in terms of conservation.
Okay, any further questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. We have a motion concerning authorizing our town administrator to move forward with an MOA with Vineyard Wind.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
That will be for our review and approval.
Yeah, oh, yes, yes, yes.
That's correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Nate. Okay, going to board and committee actions. Do we have any board actions at this time?
Well, in terms of committee items, I think at the next meeting, we'll have candidates for the Water Resources Advisory Committee. We don't have that available tonight.
Okay. We have minutes, the meetings of May 5th, 2018.
I move to approve the minutes of May 5th, 2018.
Second.
Okay, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, staying? All right. Upcoming agenda review, we have a meeting planned on August 7th. There's an executive session planned for that meeting, so is that a five o'clock start or six o'clock start? Do we know at this point?
I think it's flexible. We were planning to do, as we have in the past, a five o'clock start for executive session and a six o'clock start for the meeting, but that's flexible if the board chooses to adjust that.
Okay, we, we just added an item that's probably going to take a fair amount of time with regard to the schools on that agenda, so. And I think Mike... So, and I think, Mike, you were saying the show cause hearing might take a?
I think that's going to take some time, Norm.
Take some time. Okay. And we've got golf on there. That's, the golf 2018 is a wrap-up, is it not? So it's?
It's a wrap-up of FY '18, yes.
Okay. So probably, we're not going to be talking really about plans for 2019 or substantial discussion of options or anything of that nature?
As we've set up, the presentation is just a wrap-up and overview of FY '18.
All right. Any other thoughts or questions on the meeting of August 7th? Okay.
Five p.m.
Any other input on the agenda?
I think 5:00 p.m. is fine. I don't know if the show cause hearings already been advertised for a particular time, but?
Usually at six.
Yeah. So that we're covered.
I haven't seen the ad, but normally that's what it is.
Okay.
We continued it actually by agreement, I think.
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
So it may not have to be advertised.
So I know I sent them an email and I, I'll check it, but I believe I told them that it, and I know the town did as well. I think I told them it was continued to the state and I'm pretty sure I said six o'clock.
Okay. Now, we also have on there a building committee charge. Do we have a committee under consideration at this point? Members of the committee under consideration?
We do, yeah. This is for the Public Works.
Right.
New facility, establishing a, essentially a capital building committee to help review plans, review progress of the, of the design and potential construction.
Mark, are you interviewing candidates for that?
I think I need to get a better handle on the charge for that because I think, isn't the charge, I think?
The charge will make up the committee itself.
I think the thinking is, is that there may be some interest in utilizing the Capital Budget Committee that's already been appointed and maybe with an addition or two to do that work. So it'd be sort of, they would sort of assume a new identity for a while. There may be a need to make an appointment or two, but I think by and large, that'll be the bulk of the group. That's my understanding. So we'll just have to bring that before the board.
All right, so we'll talk further about that on the 7th.
About the charge on Saturday.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Any other items that we should consider for future agendas? All right. Moving along, individual items. Eric?
I have nothing, thank you.
Tracy?
I'll say.
I'll say. Okay. Mark?
Just a question. And I don't know if, Chris, you can answer this, but a few meetings back, we talked about the water agreement with Barnstable and Comquid and I'm just curious if that's come to any kind of resolution.
We're working that through. We're close. Jeff, if he's still in the audience, perhaps can provide a better update, but I believe we're very close with having a proposed agreement.
Okay.
Just a brief update. We are very close. It is on your future agenda to talk about on August 21st.
Oh, great.
So it is something we plan to have for you at that time. And that would be the Barnstable agreement as well as the Barnstable Fire District, so that, really the two agreements.
Great. Okay, that's good news.
I just have one thing to say to Mark in terms of preparing a potential charge. I think looking at our past charge and the makeup of building committees, I think, is important. Because typically we've had architects and builders and people specific to, to building instruction before.
I, is it, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't those committees get started sort of at the onset of a project when you're doing? Because I, for some reason, and I'm not sure why, but there was never, I don't think either town meeting or the board pushed for a building committee for this project. I think this is, this has become a recent concern that at least as you go into the design phase, there should be something. So normally, I think in the beginning, you want a building committee to sort of evaluate space needs, provide some oversight on the early sort of design development. I mean, I think Eric's been on a few of these, so I think you try to do these at the beginning so that you don't end up, and I'm not, I'm not saying that this is what's being proposed, but you don't end up with something that's much bigger or that doesn't fit your needs.
I think it's important that we make sure that that's the case still.
So what you're saying is, is that the composition of this group as it's constituted needs to look a lot like that?
I would think, I would think if it's a committee that's going to be, bring a building through that process, that we would want that expertise.
Well, I think, again, I haven't been the one working that. I've just heard that it's sort of working its way to us. I think that's the initial thinking, but I think your point's well taken. I think we should need to make sure that on the committee, there's some diversity there as well so that we make sure that those talents are there. And I think that's a message we can certainly bring back to Dan. Because I think he's been, he's been talking to Jeff.
So the committee composition will be discussed next meeting and it is a makeup of some members of the Capital Budget Committee as well as others who have traditional backgrounds in the building trades and the like.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I know, I've been, I've been approached by an individual who used to be on the previous DPW committee who said if we need him, he'd be happy to serve on it, so.
And, you know, I think there may be some, you know, need to go back, review, even relook at some assumptions. I don't know. I think we need to create the understanding and the charge broadly enough so that the committee has, you know, full understanding of the type of need.
No, I agree with Tracy's point. I think you want to make sure that there's a diversity of talent on the committee that typically what you would see on any building committee. I think that's a, the point that's well taken. I think we need to look at that before we bring it to the board. Rather than debate it at the board level, let's start off presenting something that reflects that. And I think, I think that's a message that should be heard by those that are working on this, you know, loudly and clearly.
I think more than just having diversity, back to Tracy's point, I think we have to have people that have expertise in this area, clearly.
Because ultimately, they're going to be the ones who are?
Architects, builders, tradesmen.
The ones of it and selling it to the public, so.
Totally on board with you. I agree with you completely.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just want to make sure I set my point before you went through making the charge and then we talked about it later.
All right. Town administrator items.
I do have a consent agenda. I'll bring a few items on that agenda to your attention. The first is appointing Pat Armstrong as our, the Yarmouth representative to the Community Action Committee of Cape Cod and Islands. This was a memo that went out a few months ago. Pat said she was interested and willing to serve as that representative, so that's on there for your consideration and potential approval. There's a draft letter of support here from the, on behalf of the board, from the chairman. This is to Representative Whelan and this is on keeping the Registry of Motor Vehicles location in Yarmouth. I guess there's been discussion or potential consideration of moving that perhaps to Hyannis.
Do we want to only send that to Whelan or do we want to send that to all of our reps? I'm trying to remember. I remember reading the article in the paper and I'm trying to remember who brought the proposal to move it to Hyannis forward. Was it Julian?
I'm not?
No, I think it's been advanced in Hyannis, particularly by the RTA.
So I think that we should, but I think our letter should go to not only Tim, but to Julian and Will Crocker as well.
I would agree.
Yeah.
So you're going to have to write some more letters there, Norm. Get your, get your pen out.
Okay. All right.
There's also a memo and authorization for NSTAR to do work on Sandyside Lane. This is to provide electricity to a house or homes in that location. They've gone through the traditional butters process and there were no issues there. There's an application for the Yarmouth Seaside Festival and then a handful of donations to the Recreation Division.
Before anybody moves the consent agenda, I'm just curious, Mr. Chairman, why the town of Yarmouth actually has a seat on the board of a 501(c)(3). Is there any answer? I mean, I think it's a bit unusual. I'm just curious. Pat, do you have an answer to that? Do we use it, Mr. Chairman?
Good evening, Pat Armstrong. The letter came asking for one of the elected officials to sit as an elected official on the board and it wasn't, I don't know if it was passed before you, but it came through to me that the officials were busy and would I represent and consider that. And having worked closely with 501(c)(3)'s in my world here at town and understanding that, I said I would be willing to do that. Well, I guess that was kind of what we were trying to avoid saying aloud, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Did that answer the question?
Well, typically, I think to Mark's point, usually they're appointed by the board themselves and not by the town. If you're, I'm not sure if you're actually a representative from us, but in any case, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I just, it is a little.
I agree with you, Tracy. I think if these are board appointments, they should at least come here and then we can pick on Pat as a board. But I do, no, I think, I just think that these things, I don't know how it evolved your way, but I think, and I'm not, Pat, I'm not speaking to you, I'm just saying, you know. In general, I think as a matter of policy that when these requests are generated in town hall and the administrator's office, I think.
Well, we have a lot of, we have a lot of, I know our police officers, we have some on the board for Independence House. We have, we have a variety of staff that are on, but it's just odd that we would.
You just bypassed if it's a board appointment.
Typically, it's you appointed by their board.
I take full responsibility that when this letter came before, through the town, I believe it was, the original letter was dated back before the election and I was supposed to bring it to you, Mrs. Poston, I didn't. And then the board changed, so it was the intent of Mr. Knappich to bring it to the board and I was to have that conversation and I didn't follow through.
So are you comfortable, are you doing it because, or because you want to, they're asking, is it a town thing? Are we sponsoring you as a town? I, I don't know how to explain what I'm trying to say, but typically the board of a 501(c)(3) would appoint you. We don't really have any authorization to appoint you to somebody else's board, so.
They've asked for a representative.
I support you and I'm glad you're doing it.
Right.
They will appoint me with your recommendation.
Okay, well, we recommend you then.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Town administrator items.
I have nothing else, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.